All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, September 27th Board of Education Regular Meeting. And I'd like to ask Megan Mastur Giacomo, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Welcome, everyone. We are going to have a brief superintendent's update from our interim superintendent, Ms. Mary Fox Alter. Take it away, Ms. Fox Alter.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our board meeting. I cannot believe that it's the last week of September and we've already had a one month of school in. So unbelievable. First of all, I want to say a big hi to any of you who are out there viewing over our local livestream. We set up the meeting tonight to engage in a conversation. I think I made the tables a little too wide for the camera angle. So maybe the next time, third time will be the charm and we'll figure that piece out. But the goal of this was to allow our board trustees to engage in a conversation with our administrative team tonight, who will be presenting under the Culture of Care, that main pillar of our equity work. And we will identify using the Culture of Care as our lens, the work that is taking place in the areas of social-emotional learning, positive behavior interventions, and the research-based systems that we are using. In addition, we're going to take a look at our data systems, surveys, and what do they tell us. Also, as part of tonight's presentation, we will have a brief overview from Megan regarding our community schools approach, O'Prime, and answer, in what ways do we support our students and their families in the community school work? We also then close tonight's session with a riveting presentation from Latoya on the Code of Conduct that Latoya led last year and presented to the administrators this summer. You'll notice a different lens in terms of proactive behaviors and more positive along those lines. And last but not least, we're going to talk about our Culture of Care under an academic pathway. Jeremy will speak about all the different ways we are caring for our students as they transition in terms of pathways as they travel through the high school and thinking about the next stage of their careers. So I'm excited about tonight's presentation. And again, I apologize for making the circle a little too wide, but next time I'll adjust for that. So thank you all.
All right, thank you so much. I think at this time, before we begin with all of the wonderful work session items that we just heard about, it makes sense to move up a very exciting resolution, which is Resolution 7.1 regarding a professional staff tenure appointment. So at this time, I will take a motion for 7.1. Second, 7.1 Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Tenure Appointment. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. We are very pleased to be having just voted on tenure for dual tenure in special education and English, Ms. Brianna Micas. And we are thrilled to have Ms. Latoya Langley say a few words. The mic is all yours.
Good evening. Where's Ms. Micas? Okay, there she is. Ms. Micas joined OHS in October 2019 as a special education English teacher. Since then, Ms. Micas has continued to exhibit the qualities of an exceptional educator, tailoring her lessons to meet the needs, interests, and abilities of all of her students. Although many may have found it difficult to begin their career at the start of a pandemic, Ms. Micas has excelled and saw creative ways for her students to do so as well. Ms. Micas is a skillful lesson planner and always manages to provide lessons that are culturally relevant and grasp the attention of her classes. In particular, when teaching argumentative writing, Ms. Micas sparked the attention of her class when beginning the class with ice cream reviews to practice making argumentative claims with supporting evidence. This is just one of the many reasons why students are excited to attend her class. It's important to note that Ms. Micas has taught every grade level so far at OHS, ninth, 10th, and 11th and 12th grade English. Ms. Micas has also taught our incoming ninth grade in freshman academy, leaning closely into SEL and mindfulness. Outside of the classroom, Ms. Micas is also involved in the wider school community as a Class 2025 advisor. She continues to support the class as they fundraise for future events such as semi-formal and prom. It is our joy to congratulate Ms. Micas on receiving her tenure.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here, and we're excited to give you this honor this evening. Congrats again. Okay, well, now I guess we are going to jump right in here to our work session this evening. And I will let, I guess, Ms. Fox Alter lead the show, and we'll go from there.
All right, so I'm proud to introduce the team this evening, who will be presenting on our Culture of Care pillar. And first up will be Dr. Lopez.
Thanks to the board, Ms. Mary Fox Alter, my colleagues in the Austin community for being here with us and giving us the opportunity to present. We have an amazing team with us today presenting on our aligned Culture of Care work. We are one team with one dream, and that is to create affirming and safe supportive learning environments for each and every one of our students, families, and staff. I am Dr. DeSelia Lopez, Assistant Director of Social-Emotional Learning. And I have with me Ms. Megan Mastur Giacomo, who will speak to us about our community school model and how we support our students and families; Ms. Latoya Langley, proud principal of Austin High School, who will provide an update on the Code of Conduct; and Mr. Jeremy Dukas, Director of School Counseling, who will inform us on all the happenings of our School Counseling Department, including the most recent programming, course offerings, and BOSI's programs. These are our essential questions. We hope that by the end of our presentation, we would have answered these essential questions. How does the Culture of Care align with our district vision and goals? How do we connect the dots across our system in these areas and use data to inform our decision-making practices? And lastly, how do we support educators, students, and families in this work? As we all know, this is our third year implementing the Long Range Plan, and I would like to center us in this work with a reminder of our goals. To unite and engage all our stakeholders with the aim to elevate equity and wellness for our students so that they are available to learn and flourish. In this effort, we know we develop the portrait of the learner as a symbol of our compass of where we want our children to go, inclusive of the characteristics and skills we want to help cultivate. Ultimately, we want all our pillars, including our Culture of Care, to help create spaces where our students feel happy, joyful, and a sense of belonging within welcoming and affirming environments where their multiple identities are valued and affirmed, where they have the opportunity to engage in multiple literacies, inclusive of relevant learning opportunities, spaces that will foster student agency and engagement while developing critical thinking, problem-solving skills, and effective communication skills so that they become independent, resourceful, and resilient thinkers. This is our aspirational goal for all our students who come through the Austin UFSD system. In addition, it is indeed a portrait of a learner as not a student because we are all learners in this process, and these are also the same competencies that we hope to continuously develop and nurture among the adults in our system as well. We want to always center our work around our why. Why do we put so much time and effort into this work and all we do? And that is because all of our children and families we serve deserve the best so that we can help each and every one of them reach their full potential. Our why is also centered on research that supports the Culture of Care work. So although the pandemic brought forth more of the need for the focus on social-emotional learning and mental health, it is important to note that this need is not new. The research is clear that we had a mental health crisis prior to 2020. In 2006, for example, we clearly see the link between the lack of connection in schools with high school risk behaviors, low connection and support in schools with high dropout rates, which is particularly evident in children of color. In addition, COVID increased students' social isolation, and the buffer of school was absent during virtual learning thereby increasing suicidal thoughts and attempts in teens ages 12 to 17. May I add that the most recent research noted suicidal ideation and attempts with children as young as nine years old. The point being that schools are indeed the number-one protective factor for students against maladaptive behaviors and a supportive mechanism for mental health. Research also supports our goal to develop systems that support the whole child, academic, behavior psychologically, in this work while having these pieces at the bottom in green as the foundation of our work, inclusive of our school-community framework, supporting school climate and culture, and making decisions around our data. We know that PBIS is a behavior system that teaches and rewards students for following expectations and teaches adults how to explicitly provide that support. However, this system does not fully support students who are experiencing trauma. Our goal is to develop systems and protocols that merges these two. I would like to show you a three-minute clip that illustrates the relevance of this integration between PBIS, SEL, and mental health.
It has never been more clear that we need a new response to meet the mental health needs of our youth. The social-emotional behavioral needs of students has never been more prevalent in our country, and the need continues to grow. Suicide has gone from the fourth-leading cause of death to the second-leading cause of death among youth and young adults. One in six youth experience a mental health disorder, and only about 50% of those youth receive treatment. Lack of student access to treatment leaves schools as informal mental health providers, which is okay because school mental health research says youth are more likely to complete treatment when offered in school settings. The increasing need of our youth in communities makes it time to break down silos of service delivery and focus on a whole-population response. Schools have been using a prevention-focused tiered logic known as PBIS to organize and allocate resources to support behavioral needs of students for decades. And school-based mental health has grown during this time period as well, while powerful and more effective to have support within the schools. Often, school teams and community partners still work in isolation, not knowing the supports the others provide. The interconnected systems framework draws on the strengths of both systems to create one single system of delivery, while also focusing on increasing the competence and competence of all school staff to rigorously and continuously support the mental health of all youth. Before we provide enhancements to the current systems, we first need to celebrate the progress that has been made. Through the advancements of both school mental health and PBIS, we are at a tipping point where mental health and wellness for all students, staff, families, and communities is a top priority. There is awareness and even support and policy for increasing mental health clinicians within schools. SEL is being prioritized and taught like academics to all students by all staff. There is increasing awareness of childhood trauma and understanding of the impact on learning. While these are huge celebrations, there is still work to be done. Now we need to move our focus to designing our systems to integrate these successes in the most efficient and effective ways. First, we must alter our system so that we utilize the social-emotional and behavioral expertise of school and community clinicians on teams, who are selecting evidence-based practices together that align with the need of the community, the resources available, and the capacity to implement. Then define one continuum of supports matched to the needs of their students, families, and staff, and use data to drive how students enter and exit interventions, helping move away from a traditional referral handoff approach. Integrated universal teams can focus on prevention by using data to expand and prioritize the social-emotional behavioral competencies being taught to all youth and align the skills within systems such as our school-wide matrices to create consistency. Then integrated teams create procedures and structures for routinely monitoring all practices that are put into place to ensure the end result impacts student outcomes. We also must invest in the time, space, and coaching for teachers to embed social-emotional and behavioral teaching alongside academic content. Sustainable change comes from systems change, and the ISF provides the structure and processes to enable this change to occur. If you are ready to begin an integrated way of work, see video two for an introduction to using the tools and resources. It has never been more clear that we-
Thank you for watching. So just to be clear, the system change effort and alignment with one system is the MTSS system that was presented by Ms. Turner during the last board meeting. And again, our goal within the Culture of Care frame is to transform our system so that we focus more on preventative efforts while successfully having one entry point for service delivery. Therefore, our first objective is to work in to integrate our system at tier one. For example, the SEL competencies taught in the classrooms can then be reinforced and rewarded through the PBIS framework, all while providing mental health supports for the children who need it and aligning our discipline practices with preventative and supportive strategies. The goal is to blend resources, training, systems, data, and practices in order to improve outcomes for all children and youth. There is an emphasis on prevention, early identification, and intervention of the social-emotional and behavioral needs of students. And family and community partners' involvement is critical to this framework. At tier one, we have Second Step, which is our new SEL curriculum, which is aligned with the SEL standards. And we also have a bullying prevention unit that will be adopted this year as well.
It has never been more-
To that end, I would like to remind our audience that we adopted a systemic SEL implementation that not only looks at the explicit teaching for our students, but also how the entire organization is supportive of students' and teachers' well-being. Again, we didn't have an SEL curriculum at tier one until last year when we implemented the Second Step program. I would like to show you a quick video of what the SEL curriculum looks like, which also emphasizes some of the skills being taught in our classrooms now.
Children benefit from social-emotional learning at any time, but helping them feel confident, connected, and ready to learn is especially important now. The Second Step Elementary Digital Program was created using up-to-date research and offers culturally-relevant and age-appropriate content. It's classroom-based and can be fully taught in English or Spanish. The program keeps kids engaged while they learn social-emotional and life skills like developing a growth mindset, building empathy, nurturing relationships, and managing emotions. The program can be customized to meet your students' needs. It includes more than 200 supplemental activities and family communications in 12 languages so families can be involved in their child's learning. All program resources are accessible online through a convenient K-8 license, making the program easy to facilitate so teachers can focus on helping students connect and thrive. The Second Step Elementary Digital Program, empowered with skills for life.
So again, last year, the classroom teachers or social workers taught their curriculum to all our students pre-K fifth grade, resulting in over 3,000 lessons being taught to children in approximately 109 classrooms. This year, we are fine-tuning this implementation with a focus on pre-K delivery and parent communication and adding the bullying prevention unit that will start next week. One of the things that is nice about the bullying prevention unit is that it again takes on a holistic approach with skills not only being taught to children, but also gives us the opportunity to provide professional development to educators so that they can further examine their response, as well as a module for professional development for administrators who can then reflect upon their protocols and practices. Last year, we also piloted the SEL for adult modules at Brookside. One of our SEL lead teachers lifted this work with support of one of our social workers. And this year, we are exploring to expand this opportunity within a similar structure at the middle school and high school, as well as district-wide through our teacher center in the spring. Lastly, I would like to also emphasize most recent research and alignment of SEL as a lever for equity or transformative SEL, where it has the potential to expand upon the idea of the support and development of identity by in part bringing racial identity at the forefront, while promoting positive interactions and relationship-building alongside the promotion of self-acceptance and belonging and supporting the overall promotion of positive school climate and a more equitable learning environment for children as well as adults. These are some of the specific programming initiatives from last year in our different areas that go along with the Culture of Care frame. This year, last year, we gave the DASAMINI, for example. We'll talk a little bit more about that. That is an SEL screener that was given once a year in the end of last year in the spring. This year, we will be giving it two times a year. We are continuing to support our PBIS initiatives. We had nine of our educators district-wide recently attend a tier-one implementation training at PMW BOSI's. We have a restorative justice lead at AMD and are exploring ways to further support this work. In addition, we have added more clinicians to be embedded into the decision-making teams, and we thank the community and the board for the support of the adding of new staff members. These clinicians are also connected to community-based providers within our system. We have to continuously increase our capacity, particularly in the area of prevention programming and college and career readiness with the addition of school counselors, hopefully in the future, more addition to that in the elementary buildings. With the addition of a grant coordinator, we are also better equipped to find and apply to related mental health and community school-related grants that has allowed us to continually focus on our capacity-building efforts. For example, our clinicians are embarking on the last session of DBT training tomorrow, dialectical behavioral training, which was possible via the Act of Psychology Foundation, and will continue planning coaching cycles being funded by our federal multimillion-dollar grant, the latter of which will also fund additional programming with WJCS, with a focus on bullying prevention, support for our LGBTQI2As students, family teacher consultation and training, and a support for students transitioning from fifth to sixth grade, among other programming perks for our clinicians, with a focus on retention and recruitment. In addition, our capacity-building efforts continue with newly-established field intern liaisons and MTSS leaders, which will further help with the collaboration around programming beyond the school walls via the connection of colleges and universities, while also supporting our reach to community-based agencies and referrals. It definitely takes a village to support the whole child in this work. These are some of our community partners alongside some additional statistics that we have gathered. This is by no means an exhaustive list, but we want to thank all of our organizations, including our parent organizations that are not on this slide, like OPAC, Project Alcanse, Home Run Against Drugs, the Austin Youth Bureau, and others. In terms of the statistics, we have provided training and coaching for educators on the Second Step curriculum, have trained approximately 70 educators on de-escalation crisis intervention strategies, have a team of people currently attending a PBIS reboot series, as noted, and as mentioned, are currently engaged in DBT training with our clinicians. We also continue to fund our mental health tax messages. While there is no technical way to ensure that somebody reads a tax, once it is received, we can track deliverability. As of this moment, the deliverability rate is 98%, which is much higher than the industry standard, and this speaks to the quality and accuracy of the contact data that we house. We would like to now move into some more data that we gather from our school community around our Culture of Care, including students, staff, and teachers, and parents. But before we do that, it is important to remind the audience of the adoption of the CASL framework and what that entails so that we can have a better understanding as to the connection between the framework and the data. And with that, I would like to show a quick video that explains what the CASL framework is. It is about five minutes long or so. We'll be reminded of the SEL competencies that we are teaching via the Second Step program and what we're measuring through the DASAMINI and the Paranorman surveys.
Think about the young people in your lives in all the different places where they're learning about themselves, how to relate to others, and work together on goals. How can we intentionally create learning experiences that will help all young people develop and maintain positive relationships, become lifelong learners, and contribute to a more caring, just world? Educators, researchers, community members, families, and the students themselves agree what we need is social and emotional learning, or SEL. SEL is the process through which young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes that help us to understand ourselves, connect with others, achieve our goals, and support our communities. We all need opportunities to learn and engage in environments where we feel safe, valued, and a sense of belonging. So how does SEL help schools, families, and communities work together so that all young people have these kinds of learning experiences and achieve success in education, careers, and life? CASL's framework identifies five areas of competence that together help us develop a healthy sense of who we are, manage stress, understand the views of others, and work together to create schools and communities where everyone can grow their strengths and interests. Self-awareness is about how we think about ourselves and who we are. It includes understanding our culture, our thoughts, feelings, and what we believe we're capable of, and understanding how these things can influence our behaviors and beliefs. Self-management is the ability to manage those emotions, thoughts, and actions in different situations so that we can achieve individual and collective goals. This includes coping with stress and anxiety, persevering through challenges, and taking action to create positive change. Social awareness is how we understand others, how we learn to take different perspectives and empathize, even with people who are different from us. It also includes understanding how the broader norms and systems around us influence how we develop and create a sense of belonging. Relationship skills are how we connect and engage effectively with others and how we form lasting friendships and connections. This includes communicating clearly, solving problems together, managing conflict and disagreements, and standing up for ourselves and the rights of others. Lastly, responsible decision-making is how we put it all together to make caring and constructive choices. This includes thinking critically about consequences, analyzing the impact of our actions on ourselves and others, and identifying solutions that support our collective well-being. We continue to develop and practice SEL throughout our lives and can adapt and apply these competencies across different contexts and cultures. How we develop SEL is impacted by our environments, which is why we need to work together across classrooms, schools, families, and communities. In the classroom, students can be explicitly taught SEL skills and also can practice and apply SEL during core subjects, like discussing different perspectives in social studies and language arts or collaboratively problem-solving in science or math. SEL is most effective when supported by evidence-based programs and trusting relationships where students are treated as partners in their learning. Beyond the classroom, SEL can be intentionally promoted throughout the school experience from the way they're greeted in the m- from the way they're greeted in the morning to how disciplined practices are carried out and how adults themselves develop and model positive relationships and the SEL competencies. Outside of school, families and caregivers provide the earliest and ongoing learning and interactions for their children, so it's important that schools listen to and authentically partner with families to help shape SEL priorities and strategies for supporting their children. Similarly, schools partner with community organizations to align their efforts. SEL opportunities can be strengthened and students benefit more. With SEL, we can help create schools and learning spaces where all young people feel connected, inspired, engaged, and ready to contribute to the world around them.
To measure the SEL competencies in our students, we use two measures.
Think about the young.
What is, what does KSL stand for?
I knew somebody was going to ask me that question. I have to look it up for you.
Okay.
But it has to do with education, education, student achievement.
Collaborative.
Collaborative academic, social, emotional learning.
Okay, that's it.
Got it.
Thank you.
To measure the SEL competencies in our students, we use two measures, one being the DESA mini K through fifth grade and the other being the panorama fifth to 12th grade. We will start with our youngest students in looking at the data. There are the, these are the numbers of students participating in the measurement which was conducted around March of last year. This was sort of our trial run as we had to get teachers trained at the time and the time to do this, as well as giving them the familiarity with the Branch in Mind system where this assessment was housed. The Branch in Minds, if you remember, is also the platform where this, where, that we're going to use for the MTSS decision-making processes moving forward. This measure is, uses T-score with mean or, or average of 50 with a standard deviation of 10, and these were the results. So basically, district-wide, what we see is that we noted a positive score at tier one with 85 to 91% of our students responded, responding favorably pre-K through fifth grade. This suggests that our tier-one building and classroom initiatives are working. For students not performing well, the idea is that we may need more information on these students. Clinicians, as part of the MTSS teams, were to guide these discussions based on specific questions aligned, aligned with the RISE's protocol mentioned during our MTSS presentation, including what are the other formal and informal data points that support the DESA mini ratings. This may also include the need for more information from teachers or parents, in which case we can ask the parent to complete a more comprehensive data DESA form at the time that will provide us with more specific information around the SEL competencies of each student. Again, last spring was our baseline or trial run. We will be conducting the DESA mini twice this year in the fall and the spring. The first reading will actually be next week by classroom teachers, which will allow us to use this data as part of the MTSS process moving forward and intervene and or gather more information where needed. Following our culture of care initiatives with the CASL framework, we also wanted to measure specific aspects of our system via the inclusion of not only student voice but also the voices of our staff and teachers and our families. Alongside students' SEL competencies, for example, we further wanted to use our knowledge around research and the importance of a sense of belonging, school culture, and climate safety, and positive social connections in schools or relationships, and their effort effects on student outcomes. We also wanted our measurement to be consistent and aligned so that if we were looking at measures of school climate or a sense of belonging as perceived by students, we should also measure this as perceived by the adults within our system, as well as how this is perceived by our families. In addition, for our families, we were interested in asking questions around any barriers to engagement that we can potentially address. For our staff, the panorama servers for the first time gave us the opportunity to measure some of the work around equity, as well as provide information around our counseling program, which will be shared later on by Mr. Dukas. The moment we've been waiting for, right? It's the results here? After all that. So again, the, the students reported, self-reported their own SEL competencies on the panorama data, fifth through 12th grade, and here are the highlights. The results overall noted that 75% of our students, fifth through 12th grade, are on track with their SEL skills. In general, fifth-grade students reported significantly better teacher-student relationships compared to students in the upper grades. Black students in fifth grade noted more difficulty with emotional regulation and self-management compared to their peers. Females experienced more challenging feelings compared to males, and students who identify as LGBTQI2S experienced more negative emotions and demonstrated more challenges. Fifth-grade students also reported a higher level of school belonging and positive school climate and safety compared to students in the upper grades, and a lower sense of belonging was equated to failing grades, less perception of safety in schools, perception that the school climate to be more negative, and also noted more negative relationships in schools. We also measured school climate. We know that the literature suggested the positive school climate and culture serves as a protective factor against valedictive behaviors or negative coping habits. Therefore, integrating SEL supports into schools can enhance and sustain positive school climate by building emotional and social competence within the school community. Social and behavioral skills taught and reinforced by all staff across all settings and embedded in all curriculum lead to enhanced mental health outcomes. But what do we mean by a positive school climate and culture? What does that? Did I, sorry, was I passed? Did I keep pressing?
Yeah.
Sorry. But what do we mean by positive school climate and culture? These are the indicators of positive school climate according to the literature so that this requires holistic support for teacher, teaching and learning, which includes SEL behaviors, civic engagement, and professional development, safety that includes supportive environments that create identity-safe spaces. It also emphasizes quality interpersonal relationships for all within the system, including staff and teachers, and processes that focus on school improvement. These scores are comparing answers on the national sample with panorama, national being compared to all of the other people who have also taken the panorama survey across the country, so more than 10,000 people. The panorama servers are meant to be viewed as a strength-based measure, and as such, they will tell you the percentage of people that responded favorably alongside the percentile range based on their national sample. The colors represent whether the percent is on target or not. So you see those colors, orange and green there. For example, green is on target, and orange means an area of need or support. In terms of school climate, our families who responded, again, this is a relatively small sample of families, we only had about 200, and so families respond to our survey. But most families believe that teachers demonstrated respect to their children and vice versa, and that schools value their child's diverse backgrounds. Half of the parents or families noted the lessons in classes to be motivated, motivated, and about half also noted that the school system did not always evaluate children fairly. Non-teaching staff noted a more positive school culture and climate compared to teaching staff, and students in fifth grade noted a more positive school culture and climate compared to students in the upper grades. In terms of safety, fifth graders felt quite safe in their building while school safety was an area of concern for older students. And most students were not worried about bullying in schools. However, of those that were, some noted difficulty in getting help from an adult. Families in general also noted concerns in the area of safety. In terms of school belonging, we know that school belonging is a predictor of many things, including mental health and grades. Again, our fifth-grade students noted a higher sense of school belonging than our students in the upper grades. 41% of them responded that they felt a sense of belonging in schools, and most students noted feeling that they did not matter. Alongside 75% of students noted feeling disconnected from adults in schools at the upper grades. We know that relationships are also quite important. Most students noted having a supportive friend, family member, or adult outside of school that they can count on, and at least 65% of students or more noted there is a teacher or adult in school where they can be completely themselves around. 45% of students in grade six through 14th feel somewhat disconnected from an adult in school. As mentioned, this year, we also, for the first time, were able to measure some of our equity work, thanks to Dr. Anne Dealey, who is in the audience today. This slide demonstrates how well a school supports, school supports staff and faculty in learning about, discussing, and confronting issues of race, ethnicity, and culture. However, we still have room for growth in the area of individual comfort and confidence in having courageous conversations. And last but not least, we would also like to share other perceptions from our families, particularly in the area of school fit and barriers to engagement. School fit is another measure of belonging pertaining to their child. About half of the families noted that their child felt a sense of belonging in schools and that their child's schools was a good fit for, to his or her cultural background. 44% of families noted that their child felt comfortable asking for help from school adults, and 56% of families noted that the teaching styles matched their child's learning style. Again, this is a small sample. We hope to get a better sample size moving forward. In terms of barriers to engagement, although it is still below the norm at the 10th percentile here, we are moving in the right direction when compared to the previous results the prior year. Most families felt we were doing a good job with communication and welcoming families to the building, and most were also sure on how to communicate with their child's school. They also didn't see school safety or transportation as significant barrier to school, to family engagement. Some noted that school staff seemed too busy to, and too busy, and most noted that their own busy schedules were a barrier to engagement, while others shared wanting more information from schools about how to be involved. And lastly, childcare was a barrier to about 25% of families who responded to our survey. So we wanted to make sure family engage, we measured family engagement because we know that family engagement is crucial to this work. We cannot do, do this work without the engagement of our families. And now I want to turn it over to Megan Master-Jacomo to speak about how we reduce barriers to participation, help alleviate family stressors, and help families feel a sense of belonging within our school community.
Maybe we should put the board because there was a lot of information to share just then, and again, just trying to give that overarching perspective of Jessica and Maria, who last and Kim presented the MTSS system. This is a perspective of it that adds data. Last year was the first year of an SEL curriculum plus the first year of a rollout of a measurement tool, and again, getting very valuable information, over 1,000 lessons, 78 teachers, a lot of hard work is taking place right now in the schools. So that was a lot for the board, so I'm sure you have a lot of questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll go ahead and open it up. I do have a quick question as we get started. The data that you presented tonight, do we have the socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic makeup of the folks who responded, and does it match the demographics of our district?
You mean for our families?
Yes.
I can get that to you.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand, is this, is this a representative sample size, or is this skewed in some way to the families that are, you know, tuned into the email and getting the survey and are more likely, more connected to begin with the school, so they're more likely to be filling it out? So not at tonight, I'm just curious to see.
Yeah. But to that point, we did have some, some difficulty with parent participation in general. The, one of the challenges is that the panorama survey is only available online. We did have the survey open for 90 days, which is way more than expected. We did try to not only send it through email, but we also had stations at our Saturday Explore Learn programming.
Just going to ask that.
To, where, where we gave out, you know, little gift cards and things that we raffled off for participation as families sat there, and we supported with the, with the participation and the fulfillment of the survey. So we tried it in different ways to really get parent participation.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to open it up to, I have more questions, but they'll probably be answered by the time it gets back around to me, so I'm going to open it up to my fellow trustees. trustee Batatario?
Thanks so much for the, the presentation, and I guess there's a, there's a lot of data, a lot of information, so probably going to take some time to kind of like go through it, and I'll probably have follow-up questions related to this. So I guess I'll start off with a few questions around this. So this program has been in place since, this was just last year it was put in, it was put in this year?
The second step program you're referring to?
Well, this MTSS program that we're, that's been shown up here, or has it not gone into effect yet? Am I just misunderstanding, misreading that?
So we're.
Or the behavioral path?
Okay, so the PBIS framework.
Yeah.
Has been in place prior to COVID and various capacity within our school system. COVID interrupted the PBIS frame for some time, and so we're sort of recalibrating. Last year, what we tried to do was sort of audit our system and kind of see where each building was. So I had a team of one-point person for each building, and we had four meetings throughout the year to kind of audit to see where we were. So we're sort of recalibrating now because each building was in a slightly different place. However, the beginning of this year, part of the recalibration in our teamwork from the summer, we did have PBIS kickoff again for tier one this year at many of our elementary buildings.
I mean, I'm just curious because I, I, the way I had seen this is particularly, you know, it's, it is across the district, it's not just limited through K through five. You do have a lot of these instances, particularly as kids are going through changes as they go from fifth grade to middle school, and particularly with the pandemic, there's been a significant rise in, in student behaviors that have led to not-so-good outcomes. And that, you know, mental health, for instance, you know, I think there were statistics cited that is about, you know, a 15% increase, you know, and it's probably more on a national scale that kids are kind of contemplating these types of ideation and these behaviors, which honestly, that's an alarming rate, to be honest. But I think there's also, as we contemplate this, is, take a real hard look in terms of where we are, and, I mean, because we don't have any benchmark. If COVID disrupted a lot of this, I think we're going to need to really reset and think in terms of what are the real actions that we would want to take? I mean, I'm a very firm believer that suspensions and detentions do not work. They don't do anything that's of real, you know, learning aspects. I think they're just, it's giving a kid a day off, it's, it's just, it's, I just don't think it works. I think that, you know, if we implement this right in a way that we're, we're trying to reinforce whether it's restorative circles or whether if there's other types of ways to do this that helps to kind of adjust the behavior versus suspensions and detentions, I think it can work. I was at a, at a, at a leader, an ISBA leadership meeting over the summer, and there's a couple of school districts that are actually doing this where instead of the suspensions and detentions route, they're going more towards the, you know, having that framework to bring the kids into, or the students into a place where they're, they're given that ability to be able to adapt their, some of the behaviors where it works. Now, there are kids that actually physiologically or for whatever other reason, that it makes it a little bit of a challenge, and I guess the question here is what happens when you get to a, a tier three, and perhaps that isn't working very well because there could be other challenges that it's causing that? I don't know the answer to that, so I'd be curious to get your perspective on that.
So a couple of things. When we think about implementation science and systems change efforts, we always start at tier one. So tier one is the prevention, right? What are we? What are we instructing our kids to develop in terms of character traits? But the self-regulation, that's one piece. As we move through the system, we want to make sure that we're supportive of the students' behaviors in a variety of ways, both from the teaching aspect of this is how you function in school and also from a restorative aspect. And I'll let Ms. Langley speak about the kodaconda aspect as we move to the tiers. What we're trying to also build in within the behavior side of thing with our MTSS leaders that are gonna be focused on clinical work is also the behavior support plans for our students who are behaviorally challenged. And also at tier three, we also have function behavior assessments. But we cannot, we are doing that work for students intervening as well as we're trying to also build the system at tier one almost simultaneously as we also have other supports in our schools, like ANDRIS supports, for example. We have our clinicians also referring out. We have the Lexington Center as well as one of our community partners for students who engage in substance abuse behaviors. So we have a lot of community sort of support as well as school support, but we're trying to build the systems to be more supportive in general. As we also know that we're doing that work with families. So in terms of family support, we also have family ties. So sometimes our challenge is helping our families navigate the multitude of resources through the county mental health work. And we have clinicians also attending those network meetings. So we have a lot of layers that are simultaneously being put in place. Our systems now through the MTSS frame is being more intentional about that process.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, I think one of the things I think about and as we go forward, as you're thinking about, as you're building out what you need, let's talk about what specifically you need to help you and the team to really build out something that's gonna have a longer-lasting impact. Because I know we've got space contention. That's something we're gonna have a separate discussion about, and I get that. But by way of what's needed to help this, because this is, I don't think we're gonna solve this in one year, six months. It's gonna be a longer horizon. And we don't exactly know where the attention, I mean, maybe there's some data on this, where the attention really should be or where it could be based upon the limited information that we have now. But I would like to get your guys' opinion, not right this minute, but over time, as to what's needed to help address this. Because I think there's two things that concern me and keep me up at night is, one, the emotional health of the children that are there currently and what they put up with. There's a lot of pressure, whether it's social pressure, academic pressure, who knows, social media for that. You want to add in whatever it is. I think all of those things are, you know, maybe in family, whatever it might be, that it's creating a lot of pressure on our kids who are, some of them are probably, you know, more in need than others. But, you know, regardless, want to make sure that all of these kids are given the necessary supports across the district. So this way, we're making sure that all of our kids can live a really good life, but making sure that they've been able to develop and given that runway to do so.
Absolutely. Can I just mention something? One of the things, glad you mentioned infrastructure, one of the challenges is space in terms of where our clinician spaces are. So we have very limited, if no, space for group work for clinicians, for them to do whole group programming. We have, we're being challenged even with our community partners that are coming in as ANDRIS in terms of space. So we have, in terms of safety and also the provision of services. The other thing is with the DBT training right now, that is very intentional to support our high-need students. And what we want to do is also expand that training to our administrators and also potentially teachers in the later, later future. But those are some aspects of how we're continuously thinking about capacity building. Because obviously, mental health is for all and it can't only fall on our clinicians.
Absolutely. And I'll just end with this last thought here. As we look at our facilities plan, I really would highly encourage us to think through in terms of what's needed there from a facilities perspective and space perspective to ensure that we have what's needed. Because we focus on a lot of aspects of the child. This is such a critical element here that, you know, this is one that I think if we can do this really, really well, that would be a big highlight for us. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Batataria. Do you have any other comments or questions from other trustees? Sure, go ahead.
I have a couple just clarifying questions. And I know that I personally support this completely. But I know when it comes to SEL, it can be a touchy subject for some parents because it kind of feels like this nebulous thing and they don't really know what's happening in school. So I just want to set some things out and ask you, and I think I know the answer to this question, but isn't SEL curriculum mandated by New York State? Or are there standards that we are having to meet through SEL?
Yes, absolutely. I took that slide out because it was long. But yes, we have SEL-related standards by New York State that we're mandated to meet. And we also have mental health-related standards.
Great. That's what I thought. And I think that sometimes parents are a little bit afraid of SEL because, you know, it feels like a big scary term. And parents are worried that, you know, the school could be teaching values to their kids that they don't necessarily agree with or whatever. And I think, in my experience, I've found that once my kids are doing the work and I see them coming home and I've seen them talking about these very practical skills, that that allays my fears. Is there a place for parents to go where they can see what is included in second steps?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we're focusing on this year is the parent communication piece. Last year, we sent a letter home in the beginning and throughout the year. There are themes. Every week, there's a different theme. Those themes go along with parent letters. The parent letters will be sent home via OBLAST this year. So we're trying to, that wasn't necessarily, in terms of the communication wasn't the emphasis last year because we wanted to get it up and running, but it's definitely an emphasis this year to make sure that we're having that more consistent communication. So the parents will be able to see the skills specifically that are being taught in the classrooms so that they can reinforce it at home.
Sorry, I have more questions. Thank you. So we've implemented second steps for the first year last year. And I know it was administered by our school social workers. And I was wondering if there had been any, either informal or formal feedback from them about this curriculum in particular?
So it last year was implemented by social workers in one or maybe two of our buildings. Most of it was implemented by classroom teachers. The second step curriculum was chosen for its applicability, its visual features, and also its research support, as well as its feasibility to be implemented in the classroom as a tier one. Most teachers like the curriculum. They find it very easy to follow. It requires very minimal prep time, and the social workers like it as well. The nice thing about the second step curriculum is that it could also be reinforced as a tier-two curriculum. So once it's given as a tier one in the classroom, it can also reinforce the skills for those students who need it more.
Thank you. So my next question is about the DESA scores, just for clarity's sake. Were those the scores from, I think it was administered like later in the year, like in January of this past year?
March, March last year.
Yeah, so that information that we're looking at, there's nothing to compare it to because last year was the first year we did it. And so those were the numbers from the most recent time we administered it, which was in the spring.
Right. And it's actually going to be administered next Monday.
Okay. So at that point, we'll be able to have some data to compare.
Correct.
On that point, I know we've been doing Panorama for a couple of years. And I guess this is just a suggestion or something that I would like to see that would be interesting to me is some of these questions, this is a great kind of snapshot of where we were last spring, right? When I think the Panorama data is from the spring. It would be nice to see how some of those numbers change over time now that we've administered it for a few years so that we can really use that and say, hey, our numbers are going in the right direction. We're doing something right, or our numbers are not, or they're stagnant. We need to make some greater changes. Because I know that, for example, that middle-school age connectedness, that feeling sense of belonging is still quite low, but it is higher than last year. So that means we're...
It's eleven points higher.
You know what I mean? So it would be nice to see that. So I'm saying so we can celebrate what... Because if you look at that number on its own, it can, you know, only thirty-eight percent, that's a little concern. You know, it is concerning. It's still concerning. But to be able to look back to last year, the year before that and say, but we're moving in the right direction, so we need to keep doing what we're doing, I would love to see that. Just, I don't even need it right now. I'm just for next time.
Just to be clear, we will have that on some of the measures, but not all, because some measures are new. And some measures are now aligned to the CASL framework where they weren't before.
That's fine.
So I can definitely provide that to those that are available.
Great. Thank you. That's it.
Great. Anything from across the abyss? Is that trustee Schnicker?
Thank you. It's very comprehensive and lots of detail, lots of information. And I think the more insights we get, the better, right, as we go along. I mean, some of the things are new, some of them are not new, right? And I think it's, some of my colleagues have alluded to it as well, is that... So for the things that we know, what are we doing about them? You know, when you go through and you say, well, when we looked at the comparison for the fifth grade to the secondary and vulnerable student populations, and these are the issues, it's great to have that information. We invested more as part of some of the federal funds that came through. What is it that we're really doing this year? And I think the trend on the Panorama is really important. Like, I think one of the things was advisory. And we saw what happened at the middle school with Panorama surveys with advisory. We saw that connectedness went from thirty-three percent to sixty-six percent. And so that was an action that was really important at the time. And so I think with all of this, the question is, is, you know, how resourced are we for the supports that we need? And so my specific question, really, there's just two, is do we have a way or do we communicate with parents about their school teams so that they're aware, I have an issue, I need help from the school? This is where I go? Is it residually available on websites and that kind of thing? It's just a question. I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I think we should. And it could already exist, so that's fine, too. The second one is just for students that get to tier three and kind of however we, you know, look at those resources. How resourced are we to do that? If it's really like one to two percent of students or a half percent to two percent, are we resourced to deal with, in an elementary building, seventy students and give them tier-three supports in an adequate way? And that's really the thing I think we've been looking at from a budget standpoint is, it's great to talk about, we see the needs, but are we able to put actions to those needs? And what are the obstacles? Is it facilities? Is it partners? Is it the partners don't have facilities to operate? Like, but are we meeting those needs or are we only meeting the needs of a fraction of the seventy students at one of our elementarys? That's really kind of the question. And that, I'm not looking for answers tonight, but it would be good to try and get some updates on how we're adjusting and how much of the needs we're really able to meet or not.
So I can just answer it in my own way. I went to mental health training sometime in the summer and the expert was on mental health, said a statement that really stuck with me. And he said, "We're not going to therapy our way out of this." So with that said, that means that as we are continuously supporting our students who will benefit from tier-two and tier-three, we really need to also focus on prevention. And the SEL curriculum is prevention. Our prevention efforts around substance abuse is prevention. And so if we do not teach our students how to self-manage their emotions, how to cope with stress, how to sort of navigate relationships in the more appropriate ways, then we're going to always see more students at tier-two and tier-three. And so there is also a quote that says, "An ounce of prevention is a pound equal to a pound of cure." So in terms of transforming the system, we want to make sure that our clinicians are available to do more prevention work so that we are not taxing our systems up the tiers.
And totally understand and support and think it's great, you know? And I think hopefully that brings those tier-two and tier-threes down. But the question that really I, sitting at the board table, have is, what are we doing for the tier-twos and tier-threes right now while we raise the bar across the board? Because I do think it's not an either-or, it's a both-and, right?
So right now, right now, we have, well, for last year, for example, ANDRIS was supporting our, is a school mental health provider, was supporting a hundred of our students who are tier-three, who are beyond our capacity. We have the Lexington Center and Wellness Center in Tarrytown, which are also community partners that we refer out. So there are community organizations that we refer out when the needs are that high and that we can support. Remember, we're school-based clinicians. We're not therapeutic center. So that's also, you know, sort of a distinction for us as well.
Yeah, no, I mean, listen, as somebody who's been fighting for state for funding, I think the state has started to really do things here. But like, if I just look at one percent of the district and say, five thousand students, five hundred students, and we're treating a hundred to two hundred, like, what about the other three hundred? And so that's really, that's what I'm trying to get at. So, but thank you. This is, I mean, full steam ahead, great work. And really, I see evidence of it with my own children and, you know, the skills that my second grader has. Really, and the language accessible is really, really phenomenal. Just so, I really, it's a credit to all the work that you're doing across the board. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gomez?
Just to echo Frank, I am also seeing it at home. It's very sweet. My kindergartner came home last year with a calm jar and he was having a meltdown and sobbing. He's like, "I need my calm jar." It was very sweet. I have some questions around students with access needs or disabilities. I liked the slide a lot that had all of the different identities of students and what they're experiencing. And I was wondering if children with disabilities were also asked and how they feel about belonging in school, school climate, school safety, all of that.
Yep, this was all of our students regardless of disability or ability. And the indicators that you saw was because I didn't see anything that was glaring on specific for students with disabilities.
That's great to hear. And I was also wondering if PBIS is implemented differently with students with disabilities? They can have such a variety of needs and sometimes it can almost hurt some students that have access needs. I was just curious about that.
The teachers cater the implementation in the classroom. They're more to the abilities of their students and the vocabulary that their students are able to understand.
And one more question. I only know this as a parent, not really in a school setting. So PBIS, it's a lot of, you can correct me if this is wrong. It's a lot of extrinsic motivation. Do you see that move towards intrinsic? Or is it done differently in school so that kids are intrinsically motivated?
It's a behaviorist model. And so with that comes that extrinsic sort of motivator initially so that students can feel good internally about making positive choices. But the big thing about PBIS is also how to teach students expectations around behavior. So as we teach students skills in reading that are lacking those skills, we're also teaching students in behaving that are lacking those skills. But again, it doesn't focus, it's just one paradigm, right? It doesn't focus on the mental health needs of students or students who have, may have trauma-related disorders, which is why we wanted to, we're looking into integrating PBIS and SEL district-wide because it's important to see that whole child and not separate the teams or separate our discussions.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Benta.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez, for that presentation. I just have a couple of questions. Some have already been asked. One was, of course, around the sample size, which I guess is not something that we particularly know, but not just a sample size like of the families, but like of the students and everybody taking the polls. I think would be interesting to learn more about because when we see these percentages, it's, for context, we need to make sure that we remember that these are the percentages of the people who did fill out the surveys. So I'd just be curious to see how and how we can work to increase. If it isn't like where we think it should be, what methods can we work on to try to increase the engagement around that? Because I think if we're going to rely on the data, it's really important to make sure that it's representative of the populations that we're serving. I was gonna ask a question about how, you know, are you able to meet your needs around as far as facilities and things? But we'll be getting into more of that discussion, I think, as becoming more and more obvious, the needs there. One question I had was around the bullying prevention model. That second step is only up to fifth grade, right? I clicked on the link and I think it said, or is there a model that goes to secondary?
The second step curriculum actually goes up to eighth grade. We have implemented it only in district up to fifth grade right now. it only in district up to fifth grade right now. So we're looking into how can we move it up the grades. The bullying prevention is on top of the second step curriculum, the bullying prevention unit will be led by our social workers. And that's actually about a six-session series, so second step is really all year long, whereas bullying prevention is six sessions.
Okay, so my segue question to that kind of would be around, I noticed there's like the group, um, the group approach for the intervention, I think that was tier two, and then there was also, um, what was it, the peer, there was like a peer jury or something I saw on there, I'm not really sure what that, that's implemented. How, if you can, if you can't answer tonight, fine, but how do we implement that in a way where it doesn't create an atmosphere where it might, bullying might come out of that type of circumstance, like privacy issues, or whatever's being shared, and how's that regulated, so that doesn't increase the chances of bullying?
So our restorative justice frame is one that is still in development, so if we think through those different systems, right, SCL, PBIS, mental health, at our most recent PBIS training, the, the idea was that tier one would take anywhere from three to five years to get tier one implementation to fidelity, and then move up the tiers. So, which is why we're trying to sort of recalibrate our system and integrate our system, so we're not even there yet, in terms of restorative justice. Ms. Langley will talk about how we integrated that into our discipline soon, but that is, is still a work in progress.
Okay, thank you for that. How do you, um, I know the video that you showed, and I don't know how representative that is of what's in practice and what's in the slides, it says something about, because we're talking about school climate and things of that nature, and being proactive around this, and it said something about implementing this, or segments of this into the, kind of the academic part of it, could you speak a bit more what that, how, what does that look like, or what is that?
So, um, so for example, project-based learning is a framework that can be easily implemented in any of our academic realms, that is an SCL strategy. Uh, but any, anything that talks about using student voice and choice within the academic realm is also an SCL strategy. Things that talk about how to, you know, brings forth students' culture and identity in the work, regardless of the subject, is also an SCL strategy. So while we typically think of SCL as our curriculum being taught, there are SCL-related strategies that can be implemented in any academic setting.
Okay, so in terms of intersections, are there, is there like a model that kind of works with other functions in our school community to kind of help, I guess, implement that, or support that, or, because I can't imagine that's something that just would just organically overnight just be able to be?
No, we've just figured we start with a curriculum, and build from there, as people feel comfortable with a curriculum, um, and then, I, and then sort of infuse some of those, you know, best practice strategies in different realms. Right now, for example, in the English classes, is probably the easiest to implement, right, in terms of like, taking a book, connecting it to yourself, connecting it to the world, those are SCL strategies, right? And so, we are going to build that as we continuously work on system improvement.
Thank you. I had a, I did have another question about the data, and I don't know if you know this, but what block of time does this data represent? When would, this was, what, this was this, the beginning of the school year, the end of last school year?
This was last, at the end, in the spring of last year.
Okay, thank you. My last, I guess my last question for now would be, um, the slide that you had on, I think it's slide eighteen, I guess I have a question about how do we, and I know this is all, we're all still working and building this, but how do we deal with outliers, I guess, when we see that in the data? Because I, I see you put up there that the black students in fifth grade noted more difficulty with emotional regulation and self-management compared to peers, right? And that statement on its own can be read any type of way, right?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was gonna address that. What I suspect is that as, as a person of, of color, black students are experiencing, I read a recent article that talked about they experience anywhere from five to eight microaggressions a day in the school setting. And I, I'm sort of speculating that that may be part of the difficulty with the emotional regulation, it's not that by nature, obviously, black students have, you know, are prone to not be able to self-manage, it's just the stressors that probably comes along with being a black child in America.
Thank you, because I was, I was gonna, yeah, thank you for explaining that further, because I was going to, in my mind, I'm like, there's certain factors, like anxiety and things that can contribute to emotional dysregulation, right? And I, I think when we have slides or presentations that show continuous over-representation within the black student population and discipline, and then you see that, I think, you know, I would just wanted that to be explained a bit more, that it's not an inherent type of thing necessarily, it could be an environmental contributing factor, thank you. I think that's all I have for tonight.
All right, great, thank you, thank you, trustees, oh, sorry, Rob, sorry, I saw like legs go past me.
That's okay, do you wanna go?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So, two things from my end, so first around the data, and then I just want to get to the bullying, because I think that's a, that's sort of piece I'd like to focus on as we thread through the rest of this. So on the data collection for all this, can you just clarify, is it completely anonymized? Can it be tracked back to individual students, staff, family members, who fill it out? I just want to get clarification on that, and are you sharing the data with any third parties, the state? Where do the data go on these things that you're collecting, please?
Sure. The teacher and the staff, teacher and family data is anonymous, completely anonymous, we set it up that way on purpose. The student data, where we want to make decisions around the student data internally, they're not shared, individual student data is not shared out to anyone.
So the, so the student data, though, is, can be tracked one-to-one to a student, based on their answers?
Well, because we want to make sure that we're supporting the student.
Okay, but you're, and you're saying that is not being shared with any other state databases, or back with Panorama, for example, or DESA as a company?
No.
Okay, okay, so I just wanted to stick to the bullying for a second, and, you know, in, in speaking with a lot, what I would classify, a lot of families, not in my role as school board member, just friend, friendly anecdotal conversation, there, I would say there've been many stories, many of them very heartbreaking candidly, about bullying in our schools. Now, I don't know if our district is more or less, or about the same as other districts around general bullying, and it'd probably be interesting to see data on that, if we have it, and I don't know, how do you sort of, sort of means test that? But, my question then, and this is why, this to me is like a real key piece of this, out of what you just presented, is sort of your support intervention around to sort of handle general bullying in our, in our schools, and it, as you just said, K to five, and try to expand it to K through eight, this second step program, is this the thing that we're going to try to implement across those grades? And then, if the answer is yes, from, from your end, how are you gonna check to make sure it's working? How long does it take to, to work, and what are you looking for from the data points to, to get, to get general bullying under control?
So, just a clarification, um, the second step curriculum is the social-emotional learning curriculum, which is essentially sort of a prevention to bullying, that's how they categorize it, right? Second step, SCL curriculum, then there is a second step bullying prevention unit, on top of the curriculum itself. The bullying prevention unit talks about bystand, bystander intervention, what to do, how to negotiate conflict, relationship building, so it builds upon the curriculum. So I just wanted to clarify that. In terms of your, the data that you're seeking, in terms of maybe DASSA reports or things like that, I don't have that on hand, and so, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that. The data, what, some of the things that we did ask students, though, was the prevalence of bullying in their school, in the schools. Most of the students noted that there wasn't, that they didn't see bullying as a significant area of concern, however, though, there was a segment of our students who noted that if they did see a, a bullying, something happening around bullying, that they didn't quite know how to get support, right? So that's part of the educational piece that we're aligning our data to right now, but in terms of the other information, I don't have that with me at the moment.
Okay, so this bullying intervention program is layered on as a separate thing, and that's gonna be new, or that's?
That's new this year.
That's new this year. So other than that, and, you know, we could talk through Ms. Master Jockmo, Ms. Langley, Mr. Chicos, you know, as you go through your parts of the presentation, my questions will be around this particular topic, to see what, you know, we're doing from your end, but from, from your presentation, Dr. Lopez, so this is the thing that we're trying to implement again, to try to quote-unquote solve for any bullying issues? This is the, the program, and then?
That's part of the program, but also I should mention, part of the program is also the train, uh, there's a training component for teachers, and a training components for administrators to really reflect upon the practices. So bullying is not just what we do in the moment, in the moment, but also our policies and procedures, and that has not been built out yet.
Right, and then, so, I think you said it's a multi-year program to implement, correct? It will take, this bullying intervention will take a few years?
Um, it's, the bullying prevention is six sessions, so it'll be implemented this year, but obviously, we want to make sure that something is implemented, and then we measure the data to kind of see, you know, if it's working or not.
And that was gonna be my last piece of this, so after you implement it, how do you sort of figure out if, if this program, new program is working? Will it be?
Probably pre and post-referral data around bullying, you know, we also measure fidelity of implementation, so there's a way where I can see, you know, how many classrooms are, are being implemented, the program, and things like that, how many, so there's, there's implementation data, and then there's also outcome data.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I do have two very quick things, I'm sorry, um, but, um, one is, what is the strategy when you have families who may have an at-risk student, who might be tier two, tier three, and they're not responsive, or willing to sort of work with the district and, on some of what's in this process?
Can you elaborate a little bit more?
If you have, you know, an at-risk student that meets the tier three, and we want to partner them with Andres, or, you know, and the family just says, no, thank you, do we have supplemental strategies that we can utilize?
Yeah, so sometimes we, we connect them with other of our family partners, right? So internally, we also have like a family engagement specialist, that are sometimes parent-to-parent support, is, is essential, right, depending on the stressors of the family, and trying to identify what are the barriers to engagement in mental health services. Obviously, it's always the parent right to say no to these services as well, so we try to, it's kind of also use a strength-based model, and kind of say, okay, what kinds of support systems do you have, where can we support, and meet the parent where they are. We also work very closely with Family Ties, who has parent advocates as well, that can help us navigate those challenges.
Great, and then my, my other question here, first of all, I hope when we get more in the nitty-gritty of budget talks, you'll come back in some capacity and let us know what it is that you need, right? But I suspect, Megan, that you might be talking about this, parents need help with electronics. Our kids are better than us, not just like a little bit better, way better, they can turn off the VPNs, they can hack into our passwords, and they can add apps back in, and then they can delete them before we get up and check their phones. You all know what I am talking about, right? Okay, and I could go on and on and on and on, but, you know, I don't think the kind of technology that our children have access to aligns at all with their impulse development in their brain, and their ability to self-police and to control that for themselves. Yet there seems to be a disconnect in what, in parenting and our ability to understand it and try to help them with that. I have a sense that a lot of parents really need strategies for how to go about navigating this, this space, right, and how to do it in a way that respects our children, what our children want is not punitive, but also allows us varying degrees of monitoring, and helping them learn the skills of self-regulation in this space. You know, I know they're hacking around the firewalls in our schools, I know they're getting fake screens up when they're in class, I'm sure my colleague next door can talk to you about something, maybe my child did in her class? But it's happening, and I hope that we have built in direction and teaching of them about this, but like, the parents need it, too, we need help, that's just my plug for that.
Thanks, so just on another side, obviously, given the level of questions, and this is a very comprehensive topic with a great deal of depth, and people are coming at it from different angles and perspective, I'd love to circle back a little bit to what Frank had mentioned earlier, the fact that there isn't, and think about all the different resources that were mentioned, just in a brief, the SCL could give a course on this, because it's a comprehensive system that requires multiple levels and multiple input to it. You're taking data to see if it's gonna be effective, you've got preventative strategies in place, you've got proactive strategies in place, so there's a lot here, and you're, you're up against some facility issues as well. So again, I think this will be an ongoing conversation throughout the year, and on another side, an advocacy perspective on this, in terms of awareness to our local officials about how important this work is, and I want to thank the board president, it sounded like a great topic for a parent university.
I think you would have a lot of attendance.
Can everybody hear me okay? All right, before I get started, I want to welcome my family engagement specialists here tonight, they're, they're here, and I want to introduce them, we have Denise Damar, we have Carol Delma, and Alicia Inga, and I just want to say that we are a small but mighty team, they go above and beyond, and I could not do this, well, the district could not do this work without their support. They meet with families daily, and you'll hear a lot about them as I go through this presentation, but I'm so happy that they're here with me, it means a lot to have them here and present. So tonight, I'm going to go over the community school model or strategy that we have here in Austin. This is a national framework, and the Children's Aid Society, who is the guru of this work in New York City states, that research tells us that children do better in learning, in their learning development, when, when family, school, and community resources come together. So I'm gonna just zoom you into Austin, and here you could see our community school strategy. And this has been defined and redefined numerous times, but really, this year, well, in the past two years, focusing on three priorities, student success programs, adult connectedness and engagement, and social-emotional well-being for all. What I tried to do tonight was give examples of how the community school initiative is weaved through our long-range plan. While I feel like each priority has many layers of our long-range plan and examples, you'll just see a few here. So starting with student, student success programs, this really was designed to ensure that children, families, and staff have different opportunities, hopefully, maybe even to trigger a student to change the trajectory of their journey and education through maybe one experience that they may have had, and enriching the lives academically and socially of all. Examples of these are our Saturday Explore and Learn, which has shifted and changed many times, I'll talk about in a few minutes. We also have various after-school partners and opportunities, field trips from various...
Field trips from various grade levels have been at community partners that we have, as well as college visits. We recently, in the last couple of years, have had some tutoring opportunities. And also have defined my own library initiative, which is really focusing on building classroom libraries. So that's around the relevant learning. Those are relevant learning experiences that you may see through this community school strategy. When it comes to adult connectedness and engagement, this is really designed to increase the involvement of our families, to help empower them and navigate our school systems, and really help them reach their best potential. So we do this through multiple literacies. And some of them include adult classes with BOSI's specifically offer English language classes hosted currently at our high school and evenings and then at O Prime site during the day with a partner called New York Inc. Literacy Solutions. We currently have 180 participants in that program and have averaged that for the last four years. There is waiting lists, like there are waiting lists. And, and also, this is offered throughout our community at various establishments. I know that Neighbors Link offers this, OPL. So there is many opportunities as well as the ones that we offer here. Our family engagement specialists are really connecting with our families in multiple ways. They are meeting them one-on-one. They are offering building tours to any of our new families that have entered the district. And they are also hosting coffee chats at each building to really just have families come in, get to know them, have informal or maybe formal conversations and to help guide them in their journey as they have entered Austin. In addition to that, we have our social emotional wellbeing for all. And this was designed to ensure good health and school readiness, to remove learning barriers and to ensure that culture needs are met. One example of this is O Prime. O Prime is our community school resource hub. Again, that's where my team and I are housed and it is a very busy space. I welcome you to come check it out. I have seen some of you there. And it is a space where all of, many of our community partners or, and all, and community members donate items for our families. And we have them available from anything to school supplies all the way to a, could be a bed, a mattress. You know, and if we don't have it, we reach out to anyone to see if we can get them. In addition to that, we are offering navigation through any challenge that they may have, whether it's in school, at home, or within the community. We really are looking to find ways to support our families, whatever it may be. Specifically, I can also think about, like during COVID, we were an extremely busy place where families were coming to receive books, you know, to help at home with reading materials. Or we even got requests for desks because families needed now a place for their children to learn. And it's really a time when our community came together to support them. And we continue to do things like that. We also have our school-based health clinics, which I'll talk a little bit more about soon. And then again, my family, our family engagement specialist team who work to really ensure that the culture of care of our families is being met. So what I wanted to do is just give context. While, while the community strategy has been established since 2016 in the Austin School District, I just wanted to give a little context of where we were entering in 2021 and where we're headed. So O Prime was in year two when we were in the, a school year of 2021 and 2022, where I feel as though we kind of hit the ground running and knew exactly where we were headed with how to support our families. We had our, one of our family engagement specialists join us, which to help support the work. And really focusing on one of our buildings was the pilot of the program. And at that time, we were focusing, actually on two buildings, I'm sorry, Claremont and Roosevelt School. We had our Saturday Explore and Learn as a community model at that time, which, because we were still dealing with space and, you know, not wanting to have large crowds. So this was more of a community model. And various of our, many of our community partners hosted our students in our community or in outdoor locations in our schools. And again, it was a wonderful time where we had our partners come together to support us. We offered things like pottery. We had students at the Risco Music. We had families at UMAC Center. And, you know, and just, again, providing free opportunities for all families to give exposure. In addition to that, we relaunched our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, which at that time was a very small group. And I could say now, we are doing wonderful work with them. I think they're at three of our, four of our buildings and at max capacity, which is wonderful. In addition to that, we had our first gratitude breakfast for our community partners. We just really wanted to stop to say thank you for all that they do because many of them go above and beyond for our students, our staff and our families. And then we also launched that year, our DoorDash program in partnership with Feeding Westchester. And that is a partnership that feeds around 180 of our families on a weekly basis and provide door-to-door food bag for our families that need food support. As the year continued, we realized the impact of our family engagement specialists and had another one join us through a grant. And again, she really focused on supporting our new revival families as well as our youngest learners at First Steps and Little School. We had the return of our dental van at Park and Brookside School and our dental van supports our youngest learners in, again, with open door to support good health in, I'm sorry, excuse me, good dental health. That year is when we launched our My Own Library Initiative, which really focused on building home libraries and had tons of giveaways at each vacation mark, like right before vacation, and had students have the opportunities to choose books based on their interest and choice to bring home, to read, and, you know, really just encourage students to be, to be reading for enjoyment. We also launched our community service opportunities at O Prime, which had, we had our high school students supporting us in the various, you know, everyday work at O Prime, which obviously we received deliveries, so they support us with that. We see, we received many books, so they helped sort those items as well as supported us with the run, the organization and the run of O Prime. I mean, sorry, on Saturday Explore and Learn. In addition to that, we had our new partnership with the Einstein Program, which was our tutoring program, and it is still in our district, serving many of our students. And also has support, in addition, supported one of our community partners this year. We had founded the Bell Equity Fund, again, which you heard about last week, to really support things that come up, right? And more, and to provide more opportunities that we may not be able to, to give. And in addition to that, again, like I said, we, we are always shifting and changing the work based on the needs or where we are. And at that time, we were having O Prime drive-through, drive-through programs for families and were giving away items to support. So an example of that is that we had a PJ giveaway and families were, you know, invited to join us where we gave PJs and books right before February break, you know, to, again, support any families who would need such things. And then as we move on to the 2022, 2023 school year, which was last year, that was year three of our O Prime initiative. Again, at that time, actually, one of the things that, in working with the Goddard Center of Westchester, we really started to think about how are we measuring the impact? And we started to create a data dashboard, which I'll share a little bit more about. And really think about who we're meeting, how we're supporting them, and, you know, what story could that tell? So that's, that was one of the goals for last year. We had our first partnership summit with, in where we invited all of our partners again to come together to really just hear about where we are as a district, what our goals are, and then how they can commit to our work and support us. We again have our Saturday Explore and Learn and this time decided to bring it to AMD to really bring the community back together. We were ready for it and just be a space where, again, families can connect with one another, families can learn about our resources and students and families can, can enjoy new opportunities. We launched a parent academy as well, where again, supported the adults to see, you know, to, to support them in, in our schools. And some of those programs may have been technology classes, but more one-on-one sessions on navigating the schools. Or we had some nutrition classes. We offered just various different programs. We had teen talk Tuesdays, you know, all around, again, supporting our families through our goals. And then lastly, we developed a family engagement strategic plan to really, now that we have three, you know, at that time, two team members, we wanted to make sure that our roles were defined and that each building, there was alignment and they were all working towards the same initiatives. So before I share a little bit more about the impact, I just want to stop and say that, again, this work was established in 2016. It really has come to the district through our former superintendent, Dr. Sanchez. It was his vision, he brought this work here. And I'm proud to say that it's continued and I get to, to, to lead this work. I think that it's the way schools should be. And, you know, it's pretty amazing, the things that we get to offer here for our families. So I just want, I just want to share, this is our impact slide of just what comes out of O Prime. Like I said, now that we have a team, we have had 70 events where our team members have been a part of. And again, that's meeting with families, just helping them, sharing new information, you know, navigating systems, whatever it may be. I think last year, we probably had 25 events, so we see a significant increase there. Connecting with families, we've connected with 2,791 families. This was last year into the current October coming up of 2023. So this is live data, like just, we just finished completing it before this slideshow, this presentation. We had distributed 300 clothing bundles, which is through our partnership with 914 Cares. And this is a bag of love that they call and has eight days' worth of clothing, shoes, underwear, socks provided for, for our families. We distributed 1,008 book bags and school supplies. 600, 650 of those were distributed at our block party this summer. And then they continue to be distributed as the year goes on. Denise actually has a great story of a student that she gave a book bag to today that left extremely prideful and said, I have a book bag now! And it was, you know, a really wonderful moment for one of our students today. You know, they're, while this is, again, I say small, but I think it's mighty of the impact that, that we're having on our families. So where we're headed, our current work, so we have three family engagement specialists. We are in the process of getting them ready to embark on the mental health journey. And we're going to empower them to learn about that and be hopefully a trainer and have classes for our families around that initiative. They are also supporting many of our building's attendance committees. And again, being the, the individuals that meet one-on-one with families to really hear why, you know, what's going on and how we can support their needs. We're going to finalize and implement our engagement, family engagement strategic plan. We're going to get, continue to maximize our community partnerships that we have. Just think about what's working, what's not, what else are we missing? Again, like actually what you said today, Catherine, like who, what partner can I reach out to now that can help us through technology issues, you know, and think about that and bring them aboard and have some sessions around that. We're going to continue to strengthen our structures and systems. Again, like I said, we've had a data dashboard that we used last year and this year we fine-tuned it and are planning to really have some, I think, wonderful data that can help share the story. And we want to continue to educate all of our staff as we continue to have new members, just to, so they understand what the community school strategy is, what O Prime is, how we, how we can support them. And then just lastly, as I continue to do this work and reflect, I want to stop eventually and start telling our story, where we were and how we got here. Because I think it's a, it's a pretty good story to tell. And just lastly, this work, I could not do without, again, the team, the support of our administrative staff. I think many come to me often and say, I have an idea, or do we have this? Or can someone help us find this opportunity? Without our staff members, I'm looking at Vanessa now, thinking about how they trucked up to Albany and got us pallets and pallets of books for all of our lending libraries. And they were brand-new, beautiful books. And of course, and last but not least, our Buildings and Grounds team. I don't know what I would do without any of them because I call them very often and ask them for many things that are above and beyond the expectations of their daily jobs. For example, on Saturday, our next Saturday Explore and Learn, one of them will be, well, actually, the, the team will be creating a hayride for our families to enjoy. And one of them will be driving, you know, the, the tractor. So when I say they go above and beyond, it is true. So I'm appreciative to everyone and I'm happy to have this opportunity, so thank you.
All right, do you want us to ask questions? Do you want to keep going? What's everybody's, what's the pulse here? Okay, quick comments.
Just a quick comment, you said, it's good, I think it's great, you know, so, well done. I've seen some of the things that have come out of here, I can't say I've seen them all, but, you know, it's just, it's impressive, keep it up and, you know, let us know what you need.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you so much. We have personally availed ourselves of the hayride experience last year. It's quite a delight for the youngsters, so definitely come. And I, I want to thank our, our family engagement specialists are here. I saw them just before this.
Yes.
At Claremont Beck School Night, where I saw them two nights in a row and at Brookside. They are everywhere. They are really doing the work and people are at the table, people are there. They are actually engaging families, which is great to see and it pans out in this O Prime Impact Slide, which is just incredible. So thank you for all of this. My question, perhaps my only critique of the O Prime program is that it is difficult to physically get to the building. I would say that that would be the, the, a barrier. I don't know if you would agree or if you could speak to that. And just to tie this back into facilities, what, what challenges your location present to you?
So it's definitely out of the way, but I will share that families get there. Whether, and many of them are, well, some of them are walking, which is unfortunate, but are taking taxis, you know, or what, in thinking about systems and structures, what I really want to think about is how with our registration process, it just becomes more of a streamline of, hey, you know, you registered, welcome to Austin. Why don't you go downstairs and meet our family engagement specialist and, you know, just hear about what we have to offer? So how, they don't have to make a second trip possibly. So it's definitely a challenge, absolutely. But in addition to that, we're also thinking about how our buildings can have maybe some O Prime, O Prime closets, you know, and what that could look like. And also our family engagement specialists offer to meet our families in the schools or in a community, community location. So that's other ways that we're trying to, to help with that, but it's definitely.
Would you say that your work would be easier and that you may be more accessible if your office were located, let's say, in the village?
So it's my dream. So my dream, I'm going to put it out there today. My dream is to have a house or a space in Austin where it's walkable, accessible for all. My dream is to have a house or a space in Austin where it's walkable, accessible for all families. And we have O Prime, we have, you know, maybe a tutoring center for students. We have, you know, adult ed classes, all housed in one space would be my dream. Thank you. Thanks for that.
Trustees across the canyon? And I come with a different word every time. I'm excited about it.
Just really quickly, great work. It's definitely continuing to grow. And I remember when there wasn't really a designated space, let alone one out of the way for this. So it's definitely coming along. Just have two quick questions.
Sure.
When you were talking about social emotional wellbeing for all, could you speak a bit more about what that looks like for families? And especially around making sure cultural needs are met? Like what is that, how does that unfold? Or maybe an example, I don't want to put you in a spot.
No, no, that's fine. So for example, we may have families who have a diet, you know, dietary need. And they're having trouble accessing food or something. So we may support them through that. Giving them, supporting them with maybe items that we have in our pantry or offering them gift cards around that. There may be families with language barriers, right? And we're supporting them through that, where our team advocate for them with, or help them along the way of how to access what they need.
Okay, thank you. I know last week when, oh, not last week, last board meeting, when the Bell Equity Fund came and spoke. I'm assuming when you were talking about some of the supports that are given in here, like around college trips and things like that, that are coming out of that, right? How do you, and I kind of asked this already in a way of that, like, how does feedback work in terms of that? How do you determine, like, okay, because I think they did like an MBK college trip too, right? Like, how do you determine, okay, what colleges are we going to go see? Like, what are the interests around this group of kids that we're taking to visit colleges? And these are probably the colleges they're interested in, right? Like, or is it just, these are the colleges that have time for us this day, so that's where we're going?
So I actually had that discussion today with Jeremy because I was trying to a little bit, learn about, a little bit more about the process as well. And this, I mean, Jeremy, do you want, yeah, you want to speak?
Please. Because yeah, so last year, we had the distinct opportunity to take, I would say, 300-plus ninth graders to college campuses across, I would say, our area in Westchester, along with the MBK, PLP, La Sisterhood trip to Washington DC, where they have visited some HBCUs and some private colleges, the African-American museums. So that was kind of more detailed to what their needs of their group was. And they did have conversations around that visit prior to. But as far as our ninth grade trips, full-blown disclosure, fall trips are not recommended for colleges. As you know, they don't want ninth graders on their campus. So as our APs were planning these trips, I gave them kind of like a tidbit of some of the strategies I used to use as a college counselor. And I would say, "Don't tell them the grade." Just say, "Our school would love to visit your campus, we want to bring 55 students." And 55 ninth graders got there and they were like, "Jeremy, we have to talk." However, our students now got exposure to the Munrohs, the Mercys, the Pacers, the Manhattan Bills, the Manhattan Colleges. Because again, we were trying, and again, it is depending on what colleges have, right? So Stony Brook University, for whatever reason, they only accept 25 students on their campus. It's not for whatever reason, there's a shortage in college admissions counselors. So therefore, they have to work with like kind of what they have on campus. However, what we did was, we were trying to be just strategic in finding alumni on campus that would act as tour guides. So reaching out to former students that some of our APs may have known and say, "Hey, can you just be a plus one?" And they would take 15 more students. So that was somewhat a part of the process last year when we got the grant to support our students in getting on a college campus. Like just stepping foot to help, and I'll talk about that in my presentation as well, to help further kind of their commitment to this executive decision that comes junior, senior year when it's like post-secondary now.
Good to know, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Anything else? Trustee Schnucker?
So fantastic presentation. And just I want to thank our staff for being here tonight and for all the amazing work you do. Like, there's some things that make Austin really special and great. And this is really one, our community schools model is one. It's really, really unique and the work is so meaningful. So to hear tonight and those who will work outside of this, I think it's just really phenomenal. And I think your numbers and your slides, the only critique I'd say, I think there's even more things we could put onto this. And you know, and I, you know, I think Megan, you've done a fantastic job. I love the ideas of where you want to take things through. I think it's really great. I think, you know, I think Ms. Huber, you were with me probably when this was all charted out in the room and basically the plans were. And I don't think we expected to reach more than half the families in the district. And I don't think we expected to feed how many meals that we fed through the food programs and the feeding Westchester program and the health services that have gone through. So kudos to this work, keep looking for new ways to evolve it. And I will say for Dr. Sanchez, he was instrumental in this work. And just really, you know, we all owe a debt of gratitude to everything he's done. But I see we're taking the mantle and we're running with it. So I'm just, my heart is warmed by this, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anything, Eddie?
I guess I'll just say that I'm always amazed at how many hats schools are expected to wear with social needs and how well you do it, especially in Austin, so thank you.
I'll just sort of close by echoing that sentiment. I first started paying attention to what was going on in the schools and somehow ended up here because of your work in this space. It was eye-opening to me. I don't know if I should thank you or otherwise for that. But I, it's really, I feel like I've been a part of this journey from day one. And it's really been fantastic to watch it grow and take off and continue to serve so many needs. When going up to Albany and speaking with our representatives here in town, I always knew with fidelity, I could say to them, "We are a true community schools model." And we are walking the walk and talking the talk. So now give us the money that we are owed. And that is in huge part to the work that you have been doing. So thank you for that.
Thank you all so much. I'm going to turn over to my colleague, wonderful colleague, what's her name?
Thank you. And I just want to say, like, through a lot of the work that has been done that Dr. Lopez talked about, as far as some of the preventative measures and strategies, whether or not it's with PBIS, with the work that the social workers are doing now with DBT, us trying to build restorative practices, it's really helped to get where we are now. And so I started with just a quote that I shared with the principals team and also with the team that was working on the code of conduct. Because I know what we're talking about takes a lot of time. And sometimes we say, is there really enough time to do it all? And so this quote that I added, just, "Either we spend time meeting the students' emotional needs by filling their cups with love, or we spend time dealing with the behaviors caused by the unmet needs." Either way, we're going to spend time. And so a lot of what you've heard so far is really us looking at it from a preventative model to say, what is the best way that we can meet the needs of our students, identifying what they need and really putting those supports in place. So what we've talked about is really trying to create really a support system or wraparound system for each of our students, each of our families, to really be able to support them. So I thank both of my colleagues for the work that they've done so far. I wanted to share and kind of give an overview of those that have really been instrumental in helping us to create what I'm going to talk about tonight. The Code of Conduct Committee, we've met over the last two years. And each year, we kind of go back and look at the Code of Conduct, which is a very dense document. It's about almost 50 pages long. And we think through, what are some of the things that we need to do in order to update our practices, in order to support our buildings? And so we definitely always try to make sure we have an administrator, a clinician. We've had parents participate, board members. This year, for a couple of our sessions, we had a student volunteer that participated in our work in addition to making sure that we have our OTA members that are supporting and have been very hands-on in the work that's happening. So, you know, this, the work that we did for this year, we really wanted to, instead of looking at the entire document, we made the decision that we were going to create what you see, which is a behavior rubric that really talks about trying to align some of our practices pre-K to 12 and how we're responding to discipline. So I know that my colleagues have taken some time to talk about the preventative work, but I'm going to kind of walk us through making sure that we align our district pre-K to 12, understanding that there are so many disparities between how students are referred and the outcomes of those referrals, especially how it impacts our students of color and our students that are classified, really trying to make sure we create a system where we're eliminating those, what we've called the school-to-prison pipeline. So again, thank you to those that have participated in our Code of Conduct Committee. You know, I really like this quote and I learned it doing a lot of my work around restorative practices, understanding the origin of the word "discipline." And it's something that I shared with the team as we entered into this work, knowing that it's been around since the beginning, since before the 12th century. And it comes from the Latin word discipling. And it really reminds us, to discipline is to teach. It is really for us to understand behavior and then teach, correct, and model what students are supposed to be doing differently. So when we look at discipline, many times folks see it only as the consequence. And yes, there are consequences that are given, but understanding there should also be a moment of teaching in those, at those times also, during those incidents. So really trying to get our building leaders to understand, our teachers, our educators to understand that there's always a moment to teach when there is an infraction in order for the child to be able to grow from that incident. So this is the document that we created. And you're going to see throughout the document, it says in draft format. And that is very intentional because in working from pre-K to 12, we really wanted to create a document that would live on in this district, that parents would be able to see, that other administrators would be able to use. And it wouldn't just be that it's different in Claremont versus Brookside, but that it would be the same across the building levels and how we respond to discipline. So we started out by looking at levels. Our levels are very different from tiers. It really is a way for us to understand what is a minor referral versus a major referral. And so we broke it down in four levels. Level one and level two encompassing more of those minor referrals. And then when you get to level three and four, you'll have some more of those more, the major referrals. And again, each of the categories are really designed to guide our teachers and our administrators in using the appropriate interventions. Again, making sure that we're consistent and we're aligned across each of our buildings. So for level one behaviors, one of the things that we wanted to look at is these interventions aim to address behavior so students can learn and demonstrate safe and respectful actions. Right now, we also created a minor referral form. So understanding that most of our major referrals are entered into Infiniti Campus. And that's the way we're able to track some of these behaviors, to understand what has happened maybe in different buildings, what are some of the strategies that others have put into place and knowing if we now need to continue to be progressive or if there needs to be other supports for our students. So we're trying our best to collect as much data on every infraction as possible to really create not a paper trail, but a understanding as far as what we've done in the past and how we've supported students. So level one is really what we want our educators to use to decide, or to build their toolbox, I should say, as far as how they can respond to certain infractions. So just those reminders of, if there's an incident in the classroom that's classified as minor, we want you to be able to go back, we want you to pre-teach or reteach some of the expectations, making sure you're giving positive feedback, making sure you consider what things need to be done differently in the environment, whether or not it's a seat change, whether or not you're creating check-ins with your students. So really giving our educators an opportunity to build that toolbox to know what are some of the different things that they can do in order to respond to some of the infractions. Level one is really something that is addressed in the classroom. So you'll realize that a lot of the interventions and responses there are all on the classroom side because we're helping our educators to know that that really is dealt with in the classroom versus when an administrator needs to jump in and respond. Level two behaviors, this may involve the teacher and/or school administrator who aim to address the behavior by stressing the negative impact of the behavior while keeping the student in school. That is the main focus on level one and level two. What do we need to do in order to keep the student in school? And again, you'll see some of the interventions or responses as far as contacting the parent or guardian, having restorative conversations, peer mediation. If it continues to escalate, then knowing that that's the point in time that you would then get an administrator involved and understanding what the administrator on their side would do. A lot of times, some of our educators say, "Well, we're not really sure what happens when they go to the administrator." Or if you have a new administrator, they may not know just exactly how they would respond. So we're kind of giving a roadmap as far as how not only the classroom would, not only the teachers would respond, but also the administrative support and interventions and what that looks like. So again, breaking it down by levels, this is going to come more into play as I go through the side and you see an overview of what that rubric actually looks like also. So this right now is just us breaking down the responses. Once we get into level three, again, it's more of what we title as a major infraction. These are things that you would find in Infiniti Campus. And we talk about the fact that level three involves inappropriate behaviors that seriously impact school, classroom safety, and order. Again, when we're talking about safety and the impact to the learning environment, we then at that point in time have to think about whether or not it's still safe for not only that student, but other students in the building to remain in school. And so while on many levels, I totally agree that suspension is not the best way. Sometimes for safety reasons, we have to know what is the best way that we can manage the student and the behavior and the environment and control the environment in order to be supportive as possible. So you'll see, again, the classroom interventions and the responses. And it goes through a range of things. Again, it's not an exhaustive list, understanding that there may still be some things at the high school that we do that are very different than the elementary. So this is not an exhaustive list, it's what we're currently living at the moment. And again, I just want to say, the draft is, we really want to be able to come back together as an administrative team, as a Code of Conduct team, to kind of work out what were some of the challenges that we had in creating this rubric? What are some of the changes we need to make as we then turn this into a living, breathing document? So right now, it doesn't live in the Code of Conduct, it actually lives outside of the Code of Conduct. But it's been shared with each of our administrators, it's been shared with the building, with our educators, so that they all understand that this is us now trying to be more in alignment and be more systematic in our responses. Level four behaviors, these are the interventions that focus on maintaining the safety of the school and community and ending behavior that is harmful to students or others. Behaviors that are listed in level four are more than likely going to result in a long-term suspension. And so it's really understanding those behaviors and what they are, knowing that that should be the last resort. And again, looking at it from a progressive model, but also identifying some of those behaviors that might end up in a long-term suspension. I think it's important when you are looking at the level four, it's not just, and you know, it's important for me to say that suspension is not the end. For many of our students, even in the high school, the most important thing with any suspension is the reentry. It's how you welcome them back into the environment, back into the school community. So even when there has, even when there is a suspension, the most important thing for us has been the reentry meeting back into the building, either meeting with the assistant principals. Or if it's a long-term suspension, we have had the opportunity to create restorative conversations with our families, with our students, bringing in community liaisons in order to support our families and really talk about what they need in order to move forward. So again, thinking about it from a wraparound model and how we've been able to do that even at the tier, even at the level four incidents. So one of the things I just want to highlight on this slide is the little red triangle, which talks to, which speaks to students in pre-kindergarten through grade four. In trying to make sure that we align our practices, it notes that they cannot be suspended outside of school unless the behavior at issue has a red triangle and it has posed a serious and immediate threat to our school, staff, or public safety. We understand the harmful effects of suspension, especially on our young elementary students, and really trying to identify. and really trying to identify what are so, what are some of those things that may possibly lead to a suspension, and limiting the possibility of our students being suspended outside of school in grades pre-K to 4. And so now what you're looking at is a, as an overview of what the rubric looks like. Now that I've walked you through the four different levels, you'll see on one side the behavior violation. So for example, failing to attend class without a valid excuse, you'll see that it is a Level 1 or possibly a Level 2, but it never gets to the point of a Level 3 or Level 4. So as a student, as a family, you understand that you should never be suspended for fail- bless you, you should never be suspended for failing to attend class without a valid excuse. Instead, what it gives over in the side is some notes that significant absences will result in attendance meeting with the family, school personnel should determine the barriers to attendance, and necessary building and community supports. So kind of building right into the document itself, knowing what are some of the supports that we can offer families, but also understanding what the possible responses to those behaviors can be. So when you look at this document, you're looking at the levels that I just took you through, in addition to what are some of the notes that are off to the side. So looking at alcohol under the influence, it can be either a Level 2 or a Level 3, which means it's not immediate suspension, the administrator must be notified, the school nurse may be contacted, and the student assessed, student may be referred to a substance abuse counselor. So again, more strategies that they can implement in order to support the student that does not automatically mean a suspension. Alcohol selling or distributing though, whether or not it is selling and distributing, you'll see that those are Level 4, and as we noted, that the police may be notified because again, we have concerns of students being on school property, selling illicit substances. That is really a, a major concern, and what we would say is a Level 3 or Level 4 offense. This document is about 17 pages long. It goes along with the Code of Conduct, meaning looking at some of the infractions that are already listed in that Code of Conduct, we've kind of taken it out and assigned levels to it. So I don't have the full document here, it can definitely be shared with the board. But again, you'll see again, samples of arson, what levels they are, and at what point in time, if you see a red triangle, that that may impact a student in pre-K, K. It lets you know when the police may be notified, it or must be notified. If you look down at bomb threat, it says police must be notified at that area. So again, the work that we've done with the committee this year really circled around creating this rubric and making sure that we align our responses to, to discipline pre-K to 12 in order to make sure that we end some of the disparities between students of color or students that are classified, referred for discipline, for reasons of discipline. I'm going to pause here, even though, nope, let me. We just added a little bit of a snapshot on the work that has happened this year between AMD and OHS. We wanted to take an opportunity to look at a snapshot for the first 10 days of school from, you know, looking at 2022 versus 2023. At AMD, you'll see that it's almost about half, so last year they had 19, and this year, even better, it's at 8 right now at AMD. So looking at that snapshot for the first 10 days at AMD. The Snapchat for, the Snap, not Snapchat, the snapshot for the first days at the high school, it's not, it's, it's, it appears that it's very close, it was 19 last year, 18 this year. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight for the high school is that in 2022, within the first 10 days, there were five incidents of physical aggression at the high school. And for the 2023 year, there have been no incidences of physical aggression within the first 10 days. So definitely something that I wanted to highlight in each of our data. And that's it.
Good job.
Thank you.
I clearly want to thank the committee that worked with you. We have board members on it, community members, I love the idea adding students, our teachers' association, and it was a robust conversation this summer with the administrative team going into each page. So thank you for that hard work and for leading that work.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Should we comment? Do we, do you want to? Okay, sorry. Yes, we should comment. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues, questions, concerns, comments, et cetera.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I just wasn't sure, is this violations?
Yes, against the Code of Conduct, yes.
I have some questions. I know we're all going to have questions.
Okay, we'll start with you, Christine, we'll go on down.
Sure. First, I want to say, I am so impressed by this document. I, and it is on the slideshow that's posted in Board Docs, within one of the slides, there's a link, so it is viewable, the whole 17-page document. I am so impressed by it. It's clearly the product of a lot of work and a lot of input, and I'm especially impressed by how practical it is. I think, especially as we onboard new teachers, to be able to look and see, you know, what is a pick-up-the-phone-and-call-the-principal issue, and what is I need to be able to handle this myself issue, are, this is so needed. And I, I really think it will help align expectations so that everybody's clear on what's what. That's really important. So just, I really am blown away, I'm, I'm very impressed by it.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the work of the team in that we looked at several different exemplars of different, different districts, and then really took the time to make sure that it was catered to assening, and that it was a document that we can kind of work with, paying very close attention to language, and really kind of going back and forth on what should be entered into that document versus not. So definitely trying to take it from the Code of Conduct we currently have, which is written in a lot of legalese, and really bringing it into a document that is understandable, friendly, user-friendly, and can really be implemented in each of our buildings.
I think it accomplishes that goal, I, I really do. And I, and I, with the appreciation that it's still in draft form. So one thing I was curious about is if this model at all accounts for repeated behavior. So like, maybe a relatively minor, you know, I saw that damaging property, for example, less than $50, it's like a Level 1 or 2, but if a student is coming in every day, every two days, and, you know, ripping up Chromebooks or whatever, and we see a pattern over time, it still stays at that one level, or does this account for what we may see if we see repeated behavior in that same category? At what point does it get flagged, and how does that get handled?
Great question. So one of the things to notice in, is that most of the boxes have a bullet in whether or not it's 2 and 3 or 3 and 4. That helps us to kind of know that the progression of where it's going, and because of the fact that all of these major referrals, or even minors, should be documented, that helps us to understand the pattern of the behavior, to know if we now should be progressing in our response based on what's been entered in Infiniti Campus.
Thanks. I was curious also, because I think some people hear restorative practices and hear in their head that there's going to be a lack of consequence when they hear the word restorative, and I think that that's a very common misconception. So can you speak just at all about how restorative practices aren't necessarily mutually exclusive from, you know, logical consequences? Because I think that that's what this document really.
Yeah. This document, I think, brings to light that there could still possibly be consequences, and many times that there is. It's really how we respond in that moment. So right now at the high school, I would say over the last couple of years, we have not been able to fully implement restorative practices at a Tier 1 level, but really more or less at the Tier 2 and 3. And that has more to do with, like I said, the reentry meetings, it has to do with the conversation, those restorative conversations, what did you do, what have you thought about, who was impacted by your behavior, what can you do differently? So really using parts of restorative practices to really get a student to understand their behavior and the impact on the larger community is how we've tried our best to implement it. But you're right, it doesn't mean that there won't be consequences.
Thank you. My last question is, do we have, do students ever receive, for example, like a behavior intervention plan for when we see patterns of behavior, and we don't want to just keep suspending students or, or what have you?
So a lot of students, and I can speak more to the high school, they have a check-in, check-out, which is done generally with either our dean of students, and sometimes it's with one of the adults in the building that they have a close relationship to, with. And so they start out the day with their goals, their goals already selected, a certain amount of points that they need to achieve, meeting with that identified person that's going to review the goals with them, and that at the end of the day, they're coming back to see whether or not they met those goals, and really celebrating it with them or walking them through what they could have done differently. Those documents, we also, we always create them with the opportunity for them to go home and share it with a parent, and so there are definitely many of our students that are working with a check-in, check-out form.
Great, thank you. Roger, sorry, trustee Badatariya?
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate this. I have a couple of questions. I think one of them will be along the lines of something you probably heard me say earlier. But I think one of the things I'd like for us to really incorporate as part of this, bullying isn't just necessarily a physical attack. Bullying can come from social media and forums that are pretty, could be fairly aggressive, and I don't know where in here, and maybe I missed it, but I think I looked at this a couple of times, and I, I just didn't see anything that said anything about social media bullying and the actions that one can take in terms of how they interact and treat one another, or do the things that they do to one another that could be captured on there. Whether they, it's a social media bullying from peer to peer, or student to teacher, whichever, but I think that is something we need to consider as part of this in terms of what you're classifying as Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, and 4. So I think that is an important aspect to address. The other thing that, you know, I want to go back to, I, I still have a difficult time with suspensions and detentions, and I, I think the, the challenge that I have with it is, is there some way or some plan or some thought in the future that there could be, like, there's this MTSs, behavioral MTSs, we just talked about before. Rather than this being a student who might be Level 1 or 2, or whatever it's deemed appropriate, would there be that level of intervention in place of a suspension or detention so that that's kind of enacted upon sooner than sending a child home when, let's just say it's five days, let's say it's three days. Three days to a high school student may be enough of an impact academically that puts that child behind in any which way, shape, or form, potentially? Or not having the support at home, or whatever the situation might be? And I think having that time just to kind of, you know, say you're suspended for three days, I don't know that's necessarily accomplishing anything. I, I, that's just my personal view on that. I do think we should probably think about the need for bringing in this behavioral intervention versus, you know, we talked about academic intervention for the MTSs, but more of a behavioral intervention program to do that sooner, not wait till after they come back from suspension or from detention. I think that should be done in tandem and fairly quickly because, you know, these kids, they're, they're kind of calling out for help in some way, shape, or form, or there's something that needs to be addressed, versus just saying, you're out, you're out for three days, five days, whatever it might be. And then, you know, the other thing to think about too is, you know, what are those, some of those things that are Level 1 that just, somebody was given a consequence for? Let's just say it was an AP exam, and I'm reflecting on my own personal experience, that's not what this is, but there's an AP exam, there's, you know, there, nobody, the parking lots were empty, a child goes and parks in the teacher parking lot, and then gets called into a, into like a, I guess a quasi-detention, detention, whatever it might be. Is that, you know, is that more of a warning? Or should that be more of a warning, where somebody who's actually come in, they've been spending time, you know, doing something that they, that's much more harmful to themselves, potentially, that, that's something should, to be looked at, right? So I, I think there's a lot to consider in this, because I, I know there, this is, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I, I think this is better than what we had before, so great work on this, but I do think that there's still something to be said about suspensions and detentions that I just think creates more inequity than, than anything equitable.
I just wanted to say that when I think about detentions, I think about suspensions, again, I'm always at a place of trying to figure out, how do I help the students to learn in those moments? So last year, once we realized that there was an issue in the high school with, for example, vaping, and that students were going out on suspensions because of they were found in possession of a vape, one of the things that we implemented that instead of going out on an immediate suspension, the first offense was that they had an in-school suspension, and during that time, they were going to watch a course on vaping. And then they needed to meet with the substance abuse counselor to really process what happened, the harmful effects. So using that detention or using that in-school suspension time as an opportunity for them to learn. And I feel like we're always trying to balance how we hold students accountable and let them know what is prohibited behavior in the school, but looking at it through the lens of educating still, even when it's around behavior infractions, is what we're working on. So using those moments to still teach. So the reflection room, which is what we call our detention room, is a reflection room. How do we get them to reflect on their behaviors and what they need to do different, using that moment to do that, rather than a sit and stare? It's really how do we help them to reflect? The other thing that I want to highlight is that for our students that have gone out on long-term suspension, or if it's short suspension, they've had the opportunity to go to back on track. I learned a couple of years ago that maybe back on track was not as supportive sometimes to those students that were struggling. So about, I think it was two years ago, I spoke with Mr. Hancock, and he allowed me to start an after-school alternative program, which in the afternoon, for three hours when they're on a long-term suspension, they meet with our educators, meaning one of our math teachers, one of our social studies teachers, and then during that session, they're also able to meet with the dean of students, that's again, going to help them to process their behavior. So again, how do we help them to learn, even though we've said that they've done something that was a violation of our Code of Conduct and created an issue around safety, still looking for those opportunities to teach at that same time, and then welcome them back into the environment is what we've tried our best to do.
I, I think that's good to hear. I think there, we should probably also contemplate the social media aspect of it, and also if there are students who have in a prior grade, maybe have had some, you know, issues from a behavioral standpoint, perhaps that's, you know, looking at that next year, what could we do that's going to be much more preventative versus waiting for it to happen again? That could be much more counseling, coaching, whatever it is, and if there's something that's needed by way of resources to help that, I'd be curious to hear what your thoughts are on that.
No, I think it's absolutely necessary. We did that even this summer, looking at our students that had the highest number of referrals, and working through what are some of the supports they need before school even, even started, looking at their schedule to make sure that they had either offs or not too many offs. So we definitely took an opportunity over the summer to look at our students, look at those that have been referred, look at those that presented so many different needs last year, to see what is the best supports that we can provide them with going into this year.
Thank you.
Just keep going down the line, trustee Melston?
Sure, thank you. Ms. Lang, this was great, it's, it's very, you know, clear to follow, so thank you for this, and it's, it's wonderful seeing the focus on it. A couple of quick things and then a couple of questions. So around the social media piece, I would agree with trustee Badatariya on that. I guess even if social media bullying occurs off-campus, I think you do have the quote-unquote jurisdiction to bring that in and formally spell that out here in some capacity if it spills into the schools. So I think that would be, that's a good call-out and a good add. On the committee, it's great to see a wide variety of people, involve students, and administrators, and teachers, board members. Just wanted to get your opinion as you go forward with the committee. Do you feel the, the mix, the ratio of, of that for, for teachers and administrators and students is, is on target? Would you adjust that in the committee going forward, especially as you present this out and get, you know, sort of, the, sort of the full buy-in? Do you feel that the committee is structured in a, in a good way to get, get you what you need?
I definitely think the committee is structured in a great way to get us what we need, because there's so much historical knowledge to it also, and understanding certain iterations of the Code of Conduct and why things were there versus not there, from the teacher perspective, helping us to understand what they see in the classroom, and then from the administrative lens, why certain decisions are being made. The only thing I think I would do differently is possibly have a separate group for our students. The only thing I think I would do differently is possibly have a separate group for our students. I realized that our student volunteer was not as vocal in each of our sessions and she more had a conversation with me and I felt like I had to add her voice to it. But I think that part was maybe a little intimidating being on a Zoom call because we did most of them via virtual. It was a little bit more challenging for her to participate that way and be the only voice in the room that was representing students. So just try to find a way to elevate student voices, even if that meant maybe a separate committee for them.
Great, great. So my next part is around this sort of restorative framework that you talked about and I totally agree with you that reducing the school-to-prison pipeline should be a priority. I've been trying to read in this a little bit more, especially coming on to the board. So I wanted to get your thoughts around how you're measuring whether the restorative practices in the framework in general are working with the data. The research around this is interesting because there've only been kind of a couple of really big comprehensive studies around whether restorative justice practices generally work and if so, how are they working? And in fact, what's interesting is that, first of all, you know, they're not easy to apply, right? You need consistent application, they have to be, you know, there's a lot of training involved. So that's very important. And it seemed, what I read on these studies is that it works well for kids who occasionally break the rules, so to speak. It's trickier to get those better outcomes for those who are sort of consistently doing that. And what's also interesting in the study, a couple of the studies, it actually unfortunately had more negative consequences for students of color. You saw test scores go down, for example, when more restorative, restorative practices were applied. With that, and that's unfortunate to hear. So I guess the question is, again, through the lens of just taking the bullying example of this, how are you measuring with regards to bullying or how, how do you plan to measure whether the restorative practices, restorative justice practices in place are working both for the students, that is, the recipient of the bullying, but also the students that are the ones that are causing it? How are you going to measure that and that success going forward and present that out?
Yeah, I think that some of the things that you mentioned is important in that there is not a one-size-fits-all and there are no silver, for lack of better words, bullets, meaning saying that it's not going to be restorative practices that solves everything that's happening. And it's really trying to figure out what will be, what will be the support that we put in place or the intervention that we put in place for certain students. For example, for restorative practices, it might be a great idea that we say, let's come together and have a restorative conversation or a restorative conference, but both parties have to be willing to participate in that. And if they're not, then we're going on to something different. And it really talks, it really starts with that tier-one model, that prevention, and really building from there and building that, you know, student character, building empathy, many different things. But after that, it's looking at the data. What does the data tell us as far as the repeat offenders or whether or not there's ongoing infractions? It's going to be about going back to the data. We talk a lot also about street data, like having those conversations one-on-one with students and families to see how our interventions have impacted the situation that they're working on. But understanding that it's never just one intervention that's going to solve it for all because you're right, not everyone is going to respond to restorative practices.
Yeah, no, thank you for clarifying that. And to your point, I would agree that you need sort of the participation, the buy-in from all parties because sometimes you could have the students who are on the recipient of the bullying side hesitate to want to talk. They might be afraid to talk or, you know, open up just as much as the other individual. So thank you for that. But yeah, tracking that to see, you know, what's working and then adjusting, to your point, not a one-size-fits-all approach is very important. So thank you for this work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will now go across the gorge. Are there any trustees with comments over that way? Trustee Schenker?
Sure. I thought you really opened with a great quote and you came up with a second great one. I thought the Pam Leo quote really kind of captured the essence of, in one sentence, what we've been talking about a lot of tonight, so thank you for that. And just, I really want to commend you individually on your leadership that you've done in bringing in all the parties that you have for the code of conduct. I think the holistic and consistent approach is something that we've struggled with in Austin for a long time. And so just really am grateful for the efforts there and look to see the improvements and progressions that we make to address all the inequities that we know exist. A question I'll ask just in terms of, you know, one thing that, you know, has been talked about and looked at over time is alternative space. Alternative, I don't know if you call it alternative school, if you call it sort of temporary space? Like, what is it that, my question is, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I think before budget really would be is, okay, if we could deal with students in a way differently perhaps than we do today and we had more space and we had the resources to deal with it. And maybe you'll come back and say you have the resources and not the space or you maybe, I don't know what the answer would be, I'm not looking for it. But I do think that's a really important conversation for budget. And I do think we are a district of size where we should probably, it's, you know, we probably have enough of these situations to cost justify doing it in district versus a back-on-track program at Bosse's and other things. And so I don't want to, you know, come to any conclusions tonight, but I would really encourage us to look at that and if there really is a need there, that we propose it as part of the budget process.
Absolutely, and I totally appreciate you bringing that up because that's something I find that we've struggled with a lot in saying, even with the alternative program in the evening, it's still only three hours. It's after the school day is already done, which means that you have students home from eight to 3:30 and an idle mind gets into a lot of problems. So again, if that, if there was something that we could offer during the day, I think it would be a lot more helpful building into those supports. There are times that we have situations at our school that we find it hard sometimes to separate students because there's one high school. And if there were definitely an alternative setting, it would be a lot more helpful as we continue to mediate and build those supports. I think of even our reflection room, it holds only six students. And we've tried each year to kind of find a classroom to fit it and then every year we have to take it back because we need that classroom for classes. But in that space, we would love to hold circles. We would love to hold mediations, different things like that. And we don't have the space right now to truly be able to do that. So space is definitely a limitation for us and I'm hoping that we can continue to address it and have those conversations to see what we can do differently.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bantow, trustee Gomez, anything?
So thank you for that presentation and thank you for the extensive and great work that you've done on the Code of Conduct Committee. I know just remembering when first diving into this, a lot of it was just going into the logistics of it, right? Making sure that this was a coherent document that families and staff and everyone who has to access it can access it and also can interpret it very easily. And so I'm, it's really good to see how that's coming along. And just thank you for, I guess, just the insight you've given along the way and just how you've been able to bring everyone's voice to the table and really implement it, the feedback into the document. So that's been really great to see. A question, not a question, but like a comment around, you know, I don't know how, you said it was a living document and I think that's great because that gives it room for more feedback, more things we learn along the way. And as we, to the point that I was going to bring up as well around space, not just designated spaces, but I think this is not, this is out of your particular, you know, control, but when we talk about space, space in itself is just important. And in certain schools like the high school and the middle school, it's not just cramped in the classroom, it's cramped in the hallways, right? And it's like, although that is a very key social part of a day developmentally for students, it is kind of overly cramped to a point where it could create frustration. So one thing I appreciate as well when you had us all diving into this is an appreciation of how all of the efforts we're making in the school community intersect to be more proactive for this. So we don't have to rely on this document to kind of correct things, right? And we can kind of work towards creating that atmosphere that we want to kind of quell, if you will, some of the things that we see popping up that are related to certain extenuating circumstances, right? So I really appreciate that part as well. I don't know, I mean, I know that we've kind of touched on the social media aspect, but I'm not sure. And this is something that we've discussed in the policy committee, right? But I think our two policy members are rather new. But there was always this kind of nuanced kind of approach to the social media aspect. And I think there is certain things that are without, outside of our purview, but that's something that I've always been asking us to dive in as well, just on a whole school, district-wide level. And I think there is a social media use policy that goes out to everyone as well and what our expectations are around that for both students and staff. And so I think, you know, finding ways to make sure that all of the work is intersecting, which is what we're doing, I think is really coming to fruition. This document is just, and my computer went off, but it's just, it's lovely because it really is not just focusing on, okay, what are we going to do when we see disruptive behaviors? It's like, what does this mean? How do we get here, right? And how do we keep from repeating, repetitively getting here? So I just really appreciate the work that's went into, that's gone into this. And you're leading us through this work and how you've really just kind of coalesced a bunch of different perspectives and like you said, even looking outside of the district to get different feedback on what's worked, but not just dumping it in here, customizing it to see how it fits our school community and our needs here as well. And I can only imagine that this will continue to grow in a way that's going to be highly beneficial for our students and our, and our whole school community in general. So thank you for all the work, the hard work that you put into this.
Thank you for sitting on the committee also and guiding us in that work.
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of quick questions. Thank you trustee Schenker because I was going to raise the alternative education programming issue as well. I mean, there are just a subsection of students that our traditional form of education simply does not work for them. And I love this quote at the end of the presentation that hasn't been said yet, but when a flower doesn't bloom, you fix the environment in which it grows, not the flower, right? And I really do feel like we're, we're in a unique position, especially as we're talking about facilities coming up, to change the potting soil for our flowers. And I hope we can. Then I wanted to ask you about this snapshot at, I'm very proud of the improvements in the, some of the issues, behavioral issues at the high school and especially proud of what's reflected at AMD. I know that that has been sort of a all-hands-on-deck effort. I'm wondering if anyone at the table can give us a rundown of some of the strategies that have been implemented at AMD that are new this year that we think might be contributing to this dramatic downturn in behavioral referrals?
Having the privilege of, you know, working five through 12, you get to come visit the awesome counselors at the middle school and you get to interact with different staff members at the middle school, folks that service our students in the cafeteria, that work in the hallways, teachers that are sitting across from restrooms. And just in those qualitative moments, I would say, hearing feedback from them about just like this sense of change that has happened, right? Students are smiling. I'm going to be very transparent, there's a purpose when I came here. I went on a gear-up trip, so I wanted to visit some of those young men and women I went on that trip with. Even their response of how it just feels different, how they're, you know, responding to, I would say, certain staff members, you know, I would say directions, right? It's just a very different feeling. The counselors being on and about, as I was here, my seventh-grade counselor was working with a student on the second floor, right? Through not necessarily a crisis, but a personal moment, right? Where they were able to do that and then I would say in collaboration with a teacher, the school safety officer, the dean and administrator, and then being able to kind of like go through, I would say, an SCL moment and say, let's give the students some space, let's have one person in the room and everybody else, can you please hide in the stairwell, right? So things like that are just impressive. And one of the big things is that love sign. And the main office, I will say, like, it's not a cubby for students that are disruptive anymore. You would walk in that main office at points in times and you knew those students were quote-unquote in trouble. That has changed and that is impactful. Because now when the students visit the principal, they know they're not in trouble, but they're visiting somebody that love and cares for them. That's difference not only in the middle school, but also in the high school as well. When students are walking into spaces, those greetings are important. How we greet our students in the morning, how we redirect them when they're in certain behaviors, right? Where are you going can be very, very disruptive to a student's day. So seeing those changes have been, again, I think those what the data screams out is our students are feeling the love in a building.
Great, thank you.
I just want to echo that as well. I've been, I've had several meetings with the AMD team as well and have visited the AMD spaces as well as the high school. And in terms of their, the whole focus was really about rebuilding trust within the school community and also school culture and climate, which ties us right back into what we're talking about. So the safety and the trust building that's occurred with, not only just with the students, but also among the staff, from staff to administration, has been tremendous. And I think that they've worked really hard to really bring together the different voices of their school community as well as also the consistency of, and the, also the immediate corrective feedback that our new principal and interim have been able to do at AMD with the adults that are also patrolling the building has also helped, right? How do we also give that immediate corrective feedback to our security staff? Our monitors and things like that have also been really nice to see so that everybody is on the same page and you can just feel the difference from walking into the building as mentioned, but also within the building and its structure and its consistency when walking around.
Thank you. All right. I think we're up. Next, Jeremy, with you?
Yes. Last but not least, all right, good morning. No, I love this. Thank you all for having me this evening. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my team, starting at our fifth-grade school at Roosevelt, counselor Walsh, our eighth-grade counselor, Ms. Acevedo, Ms. Rivero, Mr. Gordino, Mr. Brooks at the high school, Mr. Corcoran, Ms. Cuddy, Ms. Galindo, Ms. Knowles, Dr. McFarland, Ms. Montoya, and Mr. Tavarez. And the reason why I thank them is simply because the amount of work in these past 15 days, I've seen these folks put in. And I'm going to kind of go over some of that in some of our discussion. Sorry, I'm just moving forward. But in 15 days, they've held 645 scheduled appointments at the high school specifically. And those are scheduled appointments. There are points in times where I see these folks out in our corridor and we have a lovely space, right? And Megan visited today, our students are, you know, relaxing. It's a very warm and welcoming space for our students and we want to make it as such. And I'll talk a little about, a bit about that in the next slide. But it's important to understand that those scheduled appointments are typically meant to last 15 minutes. However, things kind of evolve in 15 minutes when our counselors are working with students. And I will say this, other things that have impacted our school counseling centers across, I would say fifth through 12, is your day-to-day enrollments, right? We've seen enrollment go up in multiple factors. That enrollment piece in itself, I had one of our, our school counselors try to do a, I would say, a timeout line using an Ascamodle. It took an hour and a half for one student, right? Because to orient that student to a new culture in some cases. Because a lot of our enrollments are taking place with our students from Ecuador, Guatemala, and Central American, South American countries. So with that said, like, that process as well, like, not only are we welcoming our students back, grades nine through 12 at the high school, but we're also welcoming students that have never been inside an American high school before. So that in itself is a process for these folks and I commend them because they're trying to balance both. While phone conferences with families, applications are huge now, right? With our post-secondary readiness and college apps being rolled out. But these are essentially what our counselors are doing. In addition, they held a senior presentation week over the course of four days last week where they pushed into some of our senior English courses and they discussed the process of post-secondary applications in terms of college and career readiness, right? So they went over our counseling website, they talked about Naviance, they talked about the Common App, they talked about pairing your Naviance to the Common App, all those fun things that come with applying for school. While being all transparent, our students are still thinking about their applications to Columbia in the back of their mind in some cases, right? So it's really hard to really get to that student, which is why at the end of those conversations, they're touching base on why it's important to make these appointments with counselors as well, specifically our seniors in the time being, okay? And in addition to that, they talked about encouraging students to make the scheduled appointments. They provided, I would say, an abundance of resources for our students to navigate into the process, which is also on our website, our school counseling website. The one thing I like about this team this year is we want to talk about what's happening, right? There's affirmative action that has changed, that has changed the scope of college. Financial aid, like, it seems to have happened all in one year, right? So financial aid has now been pushed back where the federal government So financial aid has now been pushed back, where the federal government hasn't really said a date yet, but it's projected as December 1, which again, our team is still following the news reports and the data on what is the best course of action to support our families when you're applying to these colleges, and typically you're applying with your financial aid at the same point in time. So kind of navigating that process has been interesting, and we've always reflected as a team on, I would say, data and articles, and just having conversations in our office. We've had 13 college rep visits so far, and I will say, our college reps are impressed with our students. The one thing I can say about Osning, I've worked with NACAC, the New York State ACAC, these are like college organizations, the New York Metro, which is like regional counselors from Fordham and all over, they love our students, right? Our students perform at their school, our students, again, they're getting accepted, right? So there's that caveat that they wanna come to our school, so it's how are we opening these doors, and how are we getting our students exposed, and it's through our college rep visits. We have 62 college rep RSVP for our college fair. Now, I have to highlight this because last year, at this point in time, we had 47, right? So there is this kind of message going out to our college reps, and it's not just local college reps, it's like the reps at LSU, USC, like, they wanna come and they wanna see Osning students, which is very important for our students and our families at all. And again, I wanna highlight our family's kind of engagement. There are 170-plus members attended our senior night, must I add during a fire drill? And they all did fabulous, right? They helped us get the building clear, and it was just a beautiful thing. So I definitely wanna highlight kind of what's been going on in this small scope of 15 days. And now what does this mean for October? Our, our counseling team at the high school has been coordinating to develop, along with the New York State HESE, what's called College Application and Post-Secondary Exploration Month, right? So this year, our team will have spotlights, they'll have SUNY's, folks from SUNY Hub come in to present to our students during assemblies and talk about how SUNY can benefit them. We have private schools coming in, we have tech schools coming in, all in all, to just give our students and provide them information to make a decision that will impact the next four to six years based on data of their lives. So moving on to the next slide, in regards to panorama, last year, when I heard that we were doing a survey, I kind of like snuck to DeSella, and I was like, hey, do you mind if I ask some questions to get some data? Because typically panorama data highlights relationships, but you really can't get a sense of how the school counseling department is impacting, right? Some of our students experience and families experience in the panorama data, so DeSella allowed me to ask a couple of questions, and the two questions that we kind of reflected on, I should say, at the end of the year, once we received the panorama data, were, do you feel your school counselor is accessible or can easily be reached? And in March, 80% of our students felt that. Now, that's a decent number, right? We set the bar high in our department, we wanna raise that number, and we're discussing initiatives and ways to, again, reach the masses in a sense. And this was a survey, I would say, that was conducted and reached out to over 900 students. And then the second question, have you had a chance to meet with your school counselor? 90% of our students said yes, right? Which is good, like, our students are meeting with their school counselor, but now I wanna know more. What more do they need in those meetings? How more can we support them, right? So again, positive feedback, but this was like room for discussion, and okay, we have 80%, what are our goals to raise that number, right? And be innovative in our approaches. And some of it has to do with space. When we look at our course offerings, I will say this, like, we are a very competitive school when it comes to our, our neighbors, as well as, I would say, schools across the region. We offer 60 course offerings in, I would say, advanced college-level courses, our science research is not on there, but it should be. In addition to that, what I did was today, I calculated the amount of seats. We have over 1,800 seats filled in these courses, right? Which means our students are taking advantage of these courses that not only will probably potentially get them credit at the college level, but also give colleges a different outlook as to our students' performance in college, right? The most important thing about these college-level courses is, a college can executively see how a student will perform at their institution, right? So a fact that 1,800 seats are filled is a beautiful thing. In addition to our post-secondary and our, again, our college aspirations in our office, our counselors do also provide supports and information around our BOSI's program. Now, in recent, I would say, months, I've been reaching out to my colleagues at BOSI's to kind of get data to, the one thing as a counselor I did when I sat with my students is I wanted to have the data to support why I'm counseling you, right? Why are we, as a student, a family, a community, making this executive decision to participate in these programs? With that said, I asked BOSI's for some of that information, specifically for our class of 2023. So when I got those numbers, I asked for class of 2022 and 2021, I'm still awaiting those numbers. But what I found essentially was that out of the 41 graduates that participated in our BOSI's program, right? I would say 22 of the 25 that were eligible to take the end-of-year assessment took it and 18 passed, right? So this is something I have to like rethink, and, and again, in partnership with Krista Maria and Maria, is how do we connect with our folks at BOSI's to help them understand that our students are buying into this program? What do we need to do to uplift them, right? How can we support them in this process where we get those numbers up? Okay? So again, our three-years average that they presented to me was about 122 students participated in the program. That number continues to go up. As of February of last year, it was at 143, and I believe enrollment this year is close to 190, and it's, it's up. But again, that typically tends to change in October when they send us like a roster of who's attending, who's not attending. So we'll have more accurate data in October in regards to that, okay? The New York State CTE, well, this is, this is the pathway system, right? So with the pathways, right, you have your pathways that, again, there's requirements for the CETA, CTE, STEM, humanities, arts, and Lotte pathways, right? Some of those pathways we're meeting in a sense, right? But in addition to that, our students are still required to earn their 22 credits and pass their four regents. So we have to look at the pathways as an opportunity for our students, if they don't, again, obtain a second regents through science, or math, or the humanities and social studies, how can we utilize pathways to get them that plus-one option? We do have some students that participate in BOSI's, but again, in looking at our BOSI's numbers on the right-hand side, 18 students have met the credential for the CTE pathway if we were utilizing a CTE pathway in that moment, right? The CEDAS credential in a sense. So we just have to be mindful, and I know that some of our departments are now talking about pathways because it is becoming more of a thing in New York State, so there are conversations happening in our STEM, in our arts, and they're looking further into, what does that mean to present this pathway to my school? How do I get certified? What is considered a department assessment, right? And again, getting the departments together to dictate and discuss what those assessments are, all right? So again, that's, that's in discussion and conversation right now.
Could you just define the acronym for us? CTE?
So Career and Technical Education.
Thank you.
No worries. That was a good test. I worked at a CTE school, so if I failed that, my former principal would've been upset. But again, so again, so these are the pathways that New York State is looking at, because it's, again, it's an alternative method of education. It's, okay, our students are getting the classroom academic, but what other things can they do outside of the classroom, outside of the four required social studies, math, English, and science, right? So those pathways present an opportunity to explore other areas for our students. Now, I would say, majority of our seniors last year, right, and I'll share this openly, they typically meet graduation requirements minus a pathway. So they do take, like, I would say, 77% of our eighth graders last year passed the Earth Science Regents, they're coming in with one regents already, right? So that is a huge win for our, our school and our students as they go through their high school process, and that also affords them opportunity to take more higher, I would say, rigorous courses in the sciences. So that's a beautiful thing, okay? In addition to these things, I did wanna highlight, so we do have like our PSAT, and something I'm looking into currently, is we have over, we order 700 tests, right? We have 614 students take the exam last year, right? And then we see a decline of students taking assessments, and there's this kind of mindset of, why aren't students taking it? And I'll give an example, in our class of 2023, 157 seniors took the SAT exam, right? So we're having this PSAT day, we're trying to encourage our students to at least look at the exam, let's try to take the exam, and 153 of our seniors took it, 40 of them being white, 70 of them being Hispanic, nine being black, and I'm trying to remember the rest of the data, right? However, it's important to, for me to understand as a director of school counseling, why not, right? And I know the word SAT optional has been thrown out there, however, there's still benefit to taking this exam, right? You don't have to put forth your SAT scores, but let's say you walk into a school, and they're asking for those, again, any score at this point, to showcase and highlight why you shouldn't be in an entry-level English or math class. Our SAT data is showing that our students are actually thriving in those areas, right? Like, they're getting the score needed in math and English that would potentially support them in overstepping these, I would say, entry-level exams at the colleges, right? So it's like, maybe we have these conversations with students, like, you may wanna apply to SAT optional school, right? But at the same token, when you get to the doors of the school and they're trying to put you in a remedial math, utilizing that SAT math section as a way to say, hey, I don't need remedial math, I would prefer to be in a higher-level math class. So again, conversation, but to do that, I discussed with Mary, I want to, our current seniors, I want to survey them and see why they're not taking it. I don't wanna make assumptions, right? One can assume that they take it because it's SAT optional, but then again, it's offered on a Saturday, right? So do our students have time on a Saturday to make it to Osning to take the exam? So I wanna provide that survey, and I've been working with some of our colleagues at the high school, to determine the best entry points to get most of these seniors to take that survey. In addition to that, when we talk about accessibility, and we talked about exposure, I literally bought two, and I have to thank Frazine for this, Principal Shamsi, because, you know, she walks around her school and she has a desk. So we're utilizing those desks at the high school now, our school counselors, to walk out in the hallways, and they were actually used on welcome back night. And again, they were in the hallways with the families as opposed to in their offices, and that helps with visibility, right? Our students oftentimes, like, they won't come in a closed door, and I have to remind my counselors, like, how are we meeting them in their spaces sometimes? So using those desks to roll into the cafeteria or the library is the goal in the coming weeks. And I just gotta highlight, again, this October month that's coming up with the post-secondary, this was Dr. McFarland and the rest of the team, they kind of came together and said, what can we do to really inspire our students to think post-secondary? And this is where the Spotlight Program came up. So again, throughout the course of the month, in, in addition to the college fair, in addition to the PSAT, they're holding these spotlights, they're asking students to come to the auditorium to get exposure to all of these different opportunities, to expose them to their post-secondary pathways. And I believe, lastly, part of this, sorry, our lovely PTEC grant, so our Pathways Technology Grant that we were approved for late last school year, which affords us an opportunity to work with the Westchester Community College, PNW BOSI's, as well as our partners over at Peak Scale, to identify 25 students that will benefit from a grant, that students will earn an associate's degree, as well as exposure to college-level courses by their junior year, while basically finishing all of their high school components by sophomore year, right? And they will be on a college campus, they will work their way through computer science courses, right? So this year is the first year, so it's the logistics year behind it, it's planning of master scheduling, how do we schedule students for this for six years, they will be considered nine through 14, and then the logistics of, again, partnering with another school to bring this to fruition. So again, we got that grant last year, that's another opportunity for our students for exposure in the computer science field, as well as to obtain a college-level degree by their, what's considered their 14th grade year. And that is all, and I thank you.
Jeremy? Sorry. As a former high school scheduler myself, I had a great conversation with Jeremy. We talked about many things in many different ways, particularly how that building can impact the ability to offer choice. It's very limited, you've got 100% room utilization throughout the day. We got into it with the CTE program, where I'm finding space for that. I sat down with Latoya, I'm like, I don't, you know, I think Frank nailed it, we're like, where's that intermediate day treatment center space here? Where is that space where the clinicians can come through? So we had all of these really incredible conversations around, basically, the culture of care at the high school, but got into the details of it very, very quickly. So I, I just wanna thank the whole team. I, I just enjoyed the conversations we had building up to this. I'm looking at the clock, this took a big chunk of time, but again, I, I don't know what the condensed version, the executive summary is, and based on all your questions, you had a lot of really great questions about this level of work, but they all tied together in a comprehensive way. And again, I just thank you all for the level of questions, but I also, just big shout for, like, spending, like, a chunk of time, we talked about scheduling.
Thank you, yeah. Scheduling has been, and again, to Mary's point, it has been, especially when, again, when I think about school counseling services, and I think about the opportunity to bring, let's say, 10 to 15 students in a space, it falls short when classes are at capacity, right? So it's like, when, when our counselors have to utilize that central location to run groups, it's like, how can we find other spaces to be conducive to those groups and those workshops that might reach out, other students?
Having, in the guidance, we think about this, for those of you who've actually been through the college process, but have your kids thinking about it, when they have time to be able to walk into a, a college counseling center, to have a space that's just set up for college applications, access to everything that they need, computers, just a very, where for a visiting college can come and then meet in private, it is absolutely so needed in this day and age. That's a busy place, that counseling center.
Great, thank you so much, really appreciated this. I'm gonna ask my fellow trustees across the hall first, if they have any questions. Trustee Schnacker?
Great presentation, thank you. I, I think, consistent with the theme I've been asking tonight, you know, the question I ask in, as we're looking at scheduling students is, what are we not making? And so I know in the past, the boards ask for a number of free periods, and I know as a parent of a student that's had sometimes four and five free periods, I find that to be unacceptable, but everybody has a different lens on that. But I guess the question is, is, for a lot of this course load, you know, in terms of it, are we making it accessible to students, are we having to turn them away? And how, and what is the percentage of students that have these number of free periods at the end of the day? So not an answer for tonight, but I think as we're looking at facilities, we should be close to that.
Trustee Banta, Trustee Gomez, anything?
I just wanted to say, thank you so much for caring about our kids to this degree. It feels really good as a parent to be here. I just have a clarifying question that I think I missed. Did you say that students will, through the PTEC grant, earn a college, an associate's degree by their 14th year?
By their, correct, by their 14th year. So they will still be enrolled, and, and they will essentially enroll into WCC, and then they will get their associates, but a lot of work would have already been done towards that. So the matriculation rate will be answered, again, this, when you talk about intrinsic value, that, that will be stapled in by basically their junior year to finish. So that's the goal, and that's the hope with this grant.
Great. Trustee Banta, anything?
Yes, so, it's getting late, so I just jotted a couple of things to my mind. I just wanna thank you for the work you've been doing. You really hit the ground running since you started in this position, and I know it's probably easy to say, oh, you, certain things are your responsibility, but it's your innovation to how you approach it that I've been really taking note of, right? And you literally said the words innovative approach, as I was writing innovative approach, I'm like, wow, look at that. But just, just even thinking about how you're talking about using the, the rolling desks, even when, there was, last year, there was a parent kind of engagement night, and you were there talking, and you were talking about innovative ways to even use Naviance and teach families how to use that. There was, also, you said, why not? You said that a lot, right? And when I interacted with you as a parent for the first time, and we were talking, and you, you asked my child, you said, why not? And I was like, wow, I never really heard anyone go that deep into understanding the decisions someone's making, right? And I think that's really important because this is a very vulnerable time, you can point to any developmental time, but when children and students are trying to think about their future, they might not have even stopped to think why they made that choice, or why they said no to this or yes to that. And so I really appreciate you really being able to kind of really dig deep into learning what students really want, and helping them learn what they really want, instead of what they feel is just expected of them to want for their future. I think that's very, very important. And so when it comes to that, we talk about, in other areas, over the years, we've talked about financial literacy in this demographic, right? But very rarely have I ever heard the conversations paired with, what does that mean after high school? How do I take financial literacy and apply that to what I wanna do with my future, right? Because we're talking about students who, not everyone has immediate financial access to college.
Correct.
For a long time, we were hammering in college, 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 but there's certain demographics that they just, like, the only option is student loans, right? So how are we implementing the financial literacy we say we wanna teach our students into how we're preparing them for their future? A lot of the supports and the partnerships that we have now as a district are really helping us to be able to do that, but also your innovative approaches are, you're finding very, very key ways to weave that in, to very, very key ways to weave that in, to how a student can set themselves up for success without going into debt around it. And I think that's a really, really important factor here as well, because people want to be successful, people want to go to college, but not everyone can afford it.
Correct.
And we've really, kind of really set up some key partnerships that even with the P-Tech grant, with our automatic acceptance of the WCC, I think people really underestimate the benefits, especially WCC, it's a very community college, right? Using those two-year associates and then even want to transfer and go to a higher college and, and just all those different approaches, I'm really happy to see that we're really thinking about the whole child when it comes to the upper education part of it, right? And what their future looks like for what we're teaching them how to access success. So I really appreciate the work you're doing there, and I just want to make sure, I always, I was gonna, when you talked about the master schedule, we already talked about that, right? And how that's something else we need to consider going forward as a board, and how that impacts our students, not really being able to give them all the options that really truly set them up for success, because space is limiting our ability to truly roll out the options that we really want to give them. So just, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the work you're doing, thank you for the innovative ways you're approaching and making sure all of our, you're really applying equity to your role as Director of Guidance, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, what do we have over here? Any comments, questions? Yes, go ahead, trustee Manjumelli.
Thanks. When you speak, I hear you, it's like opening a toolbox and just taking out every tool for whoever needs what. And I think that that's so important, that we're reaching every kid and giving every kid every possible way to get their feet on a ladder, you know, so that they can go to where they need to go. So I appreciate, I appreciate all the work that goes into that, I know it's not easy. My question, kind of dovetailing off of what Melissa was mentioning before, about the SUNY courses and AP courses specifically, what do we do or how do we structure costs that could be potentially associated with those kinds of courses to ensure fewer barriers to entry there?
So one thing that we've had, and this is something Megan and I were actually discussing today, she was like, Jeremy, here's this opportunity, and I was like, our students benefit when they come to my office, when they fill out those forms, from when they have free reduced lunch, kind of our council, well, within the past, it was like this Austin Matters Counseling Department Fund, supporting them with that cost, right? And though, like, in some folks, like, some folks, it's like, oh, it's $96. $96 is an entry point for these students, right? What we have now is, we have an excessive amount of SAT fee waivers, right? Because 47 SAT fee waivers were used for the class of 2023. Those fee waivers roll over, so there's opportunity now for our students to not pay for certain things, but that was a huge one. Our SUNY and our AP, I will say that really, our students left with like Kool-Aid smiles when they walked out of our office. To hear that, oh, the $96 is covered, yep, they were fine.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you very much. Let's give everyone a really robust round of applause, this is a marathon. We do have one quick item on the agenda that's board-related, and then we'll open it up to public comment, and I don't think our little agenda item will take very long. So I'll quickly go into that, it's whether or not we should add an additional board meeting dedicated to discussing the smart bond in great detail on October 4th, and then we would have our board retreat on October 18th. Any objections to that plan from trustees?
No objection to that plan, but I guess it's technically a point of order, can I ask about, about something that's about to come up? So we still have, I believe, to go through this, this is the resolution. Given the timing, the late hour, and I'll just, I'll be honest, this was wonderful, and, but my brain power was spent on that. We have the ability, based on the timing, we probably need to go through 4-1 and appoint the delegate tonight, but I would propose, we punt this to the bond meeting that we're talking about, set aside 30 minutes at the top, because there's a lot to do in here, President Crossling, and just from my end, I think this is too much, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not others, to go through this tonight at this point. So that would, that's what I would propose, punt it to the bond meeting, we do the delegate tonight, if you want to get that, but we still have the ability, this doesn't have to get into the 16th, I don't think. So that's what I'd just like to propose at this point, thank you.
Got it. I do, I want to just make sure we're clear on the October 4th meeting before we get to that, so I can give them time to sit here while we still have audience comment. So any objection to the additional meeting on October 4th? Nope? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and do that. It's just a work session item, so now we'll go second public comment section at the end of the consent agenda, for any other non-agenda related topic that you may have. So you have three minutes if you want to comment and engage the panel, you may step up to the microphone, we have three individuals in the audience this evening, anyone want to say anything? Comments, feedback, questions? We had a thumbs up and a good job from Dr. Dealey. All right, there being, former trustee Lemon, the mic is yours.
Good evening. So earlier, I saw that you, the panorama survey, I happened to go, my email, I only saw one email from March 23rd, '23. Who was the survey sent to?
The surveys are sent, sorry, the surveys are sent electronically to everyone that was in our system, so what happens is, from Infinite Campus, the emails that are brought in from Infinite Campus are brought into the panorama system, and then those were sent out.
Okay, so I'm definitely in the system.
Okay.
And I only received one email, and it was only related to the high school. So that means that there's a glitch in the system.
We can look into that.
I also wanted to talk about the bullying prevention program. Was glad to hear that that's going to take effect. My question was, pivoting from trustee Banta's remark that it's, I guess it started, what age right now?
The bullying prevention program starts in a park school.
Park school.
Yeah.
So why not the middle school, which is like the epicenter of bullying in this district?
That's just how the bullying prevention program is set up. So it comes from the second step program, so it's set up that way, is used as a prevention measure going up the grades.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Any other comments? Okay. We will continue on now, well, again, I want another round of applause for our speakers, you do not have to sit through the consent agenda. Appreciate you being here, appreciate the very late hour, I know that you have to get up bright and early tomorrow morning to deal with some of the finest minds in Austin, so good luck, get some rest, you'll probably need it. All right, now we can discuss, I think, what was on trustee Melstein's mind, which is leading into 4.1 and then 4.2, we'll take them one at a time. Can I get a motion for 4.1? So moved. 4.1, resolution to appoint the delegate, an alternate delegate, for the annual business meeting of the New York State School Boards Association. This person will attend the October 16th, 2023, meeting of the New York State School Boards Association, and will advance the consensus position of the Austin School Board. It's essentially like a mini oral argument, I think it's being, it's virtual, I forget the time limits on it, but I think you might have like a minute to sort of state your position. Various delegates from all over will state their position, there may be some brief rebuttal, and it is several hours, but I will say from personal experience, I found it absolutely Is there anyone that would like to do this? I'm definitely willing to do it again, I did really enjoy it, so, but I do not want to take the, I'm telling you, it's fascinating, so I don't want to take it away from anyone else.
I think I did it last year, I was an alternate, I don't know, it was helpful to have, I'll be the alternate again, or if I wasn't last year, whatever. It was fascinating, but it is long, and so it was nice to have kind of, both of us ended up being on there at the same time, so we didn't miss anything if somebody had to like go to the bathroom, because it was long. My only, I'm going to be in the car at 4 o'clock on Friday, so I don't want to be the designee, but I can be the alternate, because I'll be home in time to fully engage with the majority of the meeting, and I don't anticipate that I'll have too much to say.
Okay.
Sounds like, sounds like if you have it.
Okay, all right, so.
I also wanted to say that I had my like NISBA, I talked to a guy at NISBA, I forget what it's called, it was like an onboarding thing, but he said that anybody can join in, and I do plan on watching it, I just don't have childcare, so I don't know if I should do it.
If you're ever interested doing it in a few years, next year or the year later, it's definitely a good one to watch, so I do encourage you.
Or if you just want to see part of it, because you don't want to commit, it is hours long, because they do.
No, I'm planning on watching it this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to share that everybody could.
Yeah, it's usually four, six hours, it can go longer than that, when in person, we had some long ones, yeah.
Yeah, it's really good, too, is that you get to see different districts and their perspective and what they're advocating for and why, and it helps open up your own perspective as well. And I think I was the delegate the last year that it was in person, so think how fascinating it was in person. But yeah, it's a good learning opportunity.
All right, so any further discussion on this one? Resolved that the Board of Education of the Austin Union Free School District hereby designate Thatham Crossing to serve as its voting delegate at the virtual annual business meeting of the New York State School Boards Association, mentioned on October 16th, 2023, and further resolved the Board of Education trustee Christine Manjumelli, she'll be designated to serve as the alternate voting delegate in the event that voting delegate is unable to serve. Be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effective immediately, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Okay, moving on now to 4.2, can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
4.2, resolution regarding the New York State School Boards Association's 2023 proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions. It sounds like we can anticipate a motion to table?
Yeah, I like the, I'd say parliamentary procedure here, I like that the president entertain a motion to table this to the next regularly scheduled board meeting where we can have that further discussion to go through the checklist, please.
All right, I'll take a motion to table for, sorry, go ahead.
So I would recommend, in the interest of time, that you potentially look at all the West Putt recommendations, and then potentially, if there's things that are different from how they would vote, that you might consider raising those at the meeting. I don't, I think if we go through each one of these one at a time, you're not talking about a half an hour and it's going to cut into anything else we're trying to do that night. So I don't know if everybody got the West Putt recommendations, should be in your email from West Putt, so we could ask Eli to, or, you know, all board members should have gotten it. But basically, there's recommendations and rationale behind them of what the region said, where there wasn't a consensus, they put it in there. Just having done this many, many times, it's usually easier to start with that, and then what you deviate off of that, and you debate a few of the questions at the end of the day. I mean, if you got to go through all of them, I wouldn't put it at the beginning of the agenda, because I think I would put it at the end of the meeting's agenda, because that'll take a lot of time.
I agree. I think last year when we did this, we did exactly that. We basically said, we're going to start with agreeing with West Putt, of the West Putt recommendation, is there anything anyone wants to break out that they want to discuss further? I think we ended up with maybe four or five, and then we sort of went from there, and I felt like that was one of the quicker years. I'm definitely in favor of doing it like that again.
Just to be clear, we're not writing legislation here, we are basically just advising what we would deem them to lobby for or not, which, you know, but I, it's, some of these will be worthy of a conversation, for sure.
So yeah, did, so did that, I missed it, because I looked, I saw obviously the NISBA recommendation.
Right, which doesn't have any of the charts or any of that.
Right.
So West Putt sends out an email that has all of the, basically, there's a group meeting that happens where they go through and talk about all these, come to some consensus, there's about four of them where they came to a no decision, because I could tell you different districts, different lenses. Typically, you're probably going to agree with many of them, and then the ones where you don't, you highlight those, and that's, if we can distill it down to a six or so, it makes the night go a lot faster than trying to go through all of these.
All right, Christine emailed that to all of us on Tuesday, and I just resent it, so we should have it now.
I was just going to say that was really helpful.
Okay, so, any further discussion on this, 4.2? I'll take a motion to table 4.2.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. The rest of these, is there anything that anyone would like me to break out from 4.3 through 4.9?
I've got a couple of questions, but it's not going to impact my voting, so as long as, because I just didn't see them answered in that email, so we can table those questions answered, but it's not going to impact my vote, so the answer is nothing.
Okay. I'll take a motion for 4.3 to 4.9.
So moved, second.
4.3, resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with Girls Inc. at Claremont School. 4.4, resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with Girls Inc. and M. Dornan Middle School. 4.5, resolution to appoint consultants for the 2023-2024 school year. 4.6, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 3rd, 2023. 4.7, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 9th, 2023. 4.8, resolution to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 30th, 2023. 4.9, resolution to approve the revised minutes of June 27th, 2023, previously tabled on August 2023. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, proposed, abstention. I will follow up for you, trustee Melstein, on your questions.
Thank you.
I will take a motion for 5.1. So moved.
Second.
5.1, resolution to approve recommended placements. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. I will break out 6.1, I'll take a motion for 6.1.
So moved, second.
6.1, resolution regarding appropriating funds to Capital Reserve Facilities Improvement Program 2022. I was just going to ask our business official, if you could just give us a two sentence explanation of, this is, this is moving $3.2 million into the Capital Reserve to cover future capital improvements, just give us the gist.
So the number should be 2.9, it was updated today, based on conversations I have with the auditors. And just to remind our audit committee members, we do have a meeting at 8:00 AM to go over the audit, and I've been actually going back and forth with Alan about the fund balance number, but as it stands right now, based on what we know, we have an excess of 2 million, $2.9 million above the 4%, so we've had these conversations in the past about where we think they, the additional funds should go. Given that we're contemplating a bond going forward, I recommend that we move the funds into the Capital Reserve, the 2022 Capital Reserve, because the 2017 Capital Reserve has been exhausted, that one was at 19 million, we did raise 19 million, we've been using it, and the 2022 is at 50 million. So that's why I make that recommendation, as we move forward with the financing of the potential smart bond, that will help us reduce the impact possibly on the taxpayers. So that's why I'm making the recommendation, that we move the 2.9 million into Capital Reserve. At that point, we will be at or below, a little bit below 4%, but the audit committee will hear tomorrow that me and Alan still have some discussions around the final fund balance number.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Is there anything anyone wants me to break out from 6.2 or 6.3? I'll take a motion for 6. I'll take a motion for 6.2 and 6.3.
So moved. Second.
6.2, Resolution Regarding Acceptance of Award from the Society for Science, OHS Science Research. And 6.3, Resolution Regarding Interfund Transfers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. We have done 7.1. Anything from 7.2 through 7.? Yeah, sorry, 16 that we should break out? I'll take a motion for 7.2 through 7.16.
So moved. Second.
7.2, Resolution Regarding Recending Professional Staff Appointment. 7.3, Resolution Regarding Recending Support Staff Appointment. 7.4, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Resignation. 7.5, Resolution Regarding Administrative Staff Appointment. 7.6, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointment. 7.7, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointment. 7.8, Resolution Regarding Bus Attendant Appointments. Any discussion? I'm sorry. It's getting late. 7.9, Resolution Regarding Professional Staff Appointments. 7.10, Resolution Regarding Civil Service Staff Appointments Before/After School Programs. 7.11, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointments Before and After School Programs. 7.12, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Appointments Summer School Programs. 7.13, Resolution Regarding Per diem Substitute Removals. 7.14, Resolution Regarding Per diem Substitute Appointments. 7.15, Resolution Regarding Support Staff Request for a Leave of Absence. 7.16, Resolution Regarding Approval of School Volunteers. And now, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. We are thankful for and truly appreciate our school volunteers. We have now reached the second public comment guidelines portion of our meeting, and I will ask if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on any education-related item, as long as it is not pertaining to specific student or staff-specific. I have three minutes. Trustee Vice... I'm sorry, Vice President Manjumeli will be timekeeper. Former Trustee Lemon, welcome back to the microphone.
Thank you. So I'm sharing an email publicly that I shared with the board. This was sent on September 20, 2023. I want this email to serve as a complaint against the interim superintendent, Fox Alter. There were two different medical exemptions provided by a New York State medical provider, and the email as attached earlier that day. The medical provider and myself were both unclear as to why the exemption was unacceptable. The M.D. mentioned that she had never seen this be insufficient for a school district, and this is concerning. So my question to the board is, did Ms. Fox Alter ever send the exemption to state officials to deem the medical exemption insufficient? So that's my question. In addition to that, what is the process when the school district is provided with an exemption from a New York State medical provider? So you may not answer that, probably, because you may have spoken to counsel, but I just wanted to put it out there publicly. Separately from that, this separate question, this may be information that's already available publicly, and if so, please point me in the right direction. Where is the board in search for the permanent superintendent, and how is the board involved in the community in that process?
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. I do have a clarification question for you, because I was writing it down, but I don't think I caught it all, and I want to make sure I get it correctly.
Yep.
Your question that was, what is the process? Can you just read me that question again?
Yes, give me one second. Let me go through my notes. So what is the process when the school district is provided with an exemption from a New York State medical provider?
Okay. Thank you. I can't answer your question about this superintendent search. It's... We haven't finalized our plans yet, but I can assure you that the community will be fully involved in the process. We just don't know exactly what that looks like at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, any... And there is no one else in the audience, so unless someone comes running out of the wings, that is the end of our public comments for this evening. Now going into board reports and dialogue. I know that... Let me kick it off like this. We're all good with the board retreat on the 18th. Is that correct? I think that's starting at 6:00 p.m. Okay. And... I know the committee... Sorry, the Communications Committee met and has been working, and it has been surrounding sort of beginnings of a communications plan on the bond, so I will let my colleagues on that committee fill in, because I think they had one additional meeting that I wasn't able to make.
Basically, we just had a few phone calls, Zooms, where we... Nicole presented her plan in conjunction with our consultants that we work with regarding communications about how we would be publicizing the bond, and it was really nicely laid out, and I think it'll be shared with the rest of the board via some way soon. I think she was gonna tinker with it a little bit more, but it's laid out month by month, and included, you know, what kind of communications that would be going out to families, or what kind of events would be scheduled to promote just education around the bond. And the other thing we did was look at and kind of vote amongst ourselves about some of the choices for a logo to be associated with the bond. Do you want to?
No, that captured the only thing I had, and I know it was an email I sent around to the board. Just the tactics look great, just as we get into that next meeting, talking about the bond. Think it's really crucial that we have very clear FAQs, answers to and anticipate as many of the questions that we're gonna get from the community spelled out, laid out, so we're ready for that when that time comes. But that was it, I think. You covered it all.
Okay, great. Did we have any other... We had the Facilities Advisory Committee that met as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I think the Policy Committee maybe met as well? I'll let anyone who wants to jump in to report back. I just... Well, so you wanna take it?
Yeah, you're the policy person. Go ahead.
Oh, sure. You don't wanna listen to me anymore.
Um, yeah, so the Policy Committee met. What, we made a meeting again before we know it, right? Next week? We're really stacking the meetings up. But we went over three different... We tackled three different policies. I can't even... It's really late. I can't remember the names, but we went through... Feel free to chime in, colleagues.
I did not mean to put you on the spot. I just was like, you just heard me talk. But I can...
I was trying to look for...
We had Jim Minahan there. Jim Minahan there.
Jared was there.
Jared was there. And Doug Barry was there.
Right.
There was, I remember, he spoke. That one was really straightforward. It was really about staff. It was a policy, I think, drafted by NISBA that was a policy about ADA compliance with staff requests for accommodations. He said if he had to write one from scratch, he would write that exact policy, so that'll probably be something that comes straight through. There was a construction policy about safety on construction sites. We don't have any policy like that. I think Jared Mantz's feedback was that some of it works, some of it is a little bit impractical, and we gave him the opportunity to go back and kind of rework it, so that it works for Austin. And so he went off to do that. We talked about red flag laws. I don't... I'm having a hard time recalling where we landed exactly on that.
Mr. Minahan also went back to kind of look at some intersections with how that fits in our building-level approaches, and making sure things are not canceling each other out, or people know the order of operations, if you will, to kind of implement those things. And it's not just like a immediately pull the, you know...
Yeah, it was a nice conversation. It was a good... We got through a lot, but I think that that was...
There was still some... I mean, there's a discussion. Is there still... Nothing's been determined, or it's just much more of... I think we'll probably continue the discussions in our next meeting.
Procedures. Oh, right. The establishing appropriate age for, you know, people to... What if, you know, a sibling or something, or an older relative or something comes and picks up a child, what is the appropriate age, and establishing what that looks like, and...
Yeah, our current policy doesn't have... Doesn't stipulate an age, but our buildings are practicing, and with a certain age in mind, in, I know Brookside and I think Park, we're not... We're operating up two different ages, I think 14 and 16. So we were talking about kind of crafting some sort of policy that maybe allows for the building principal to choose that age or enshrines that age, so that kind of got kicked down the line, too, as something to...
Right, so I think it was established that it's more appropriate for kind of us to figure out that, so that each principal doesn't have to kind of be like, oh, now it's my responsibility to figure out what's the appropriate age. Just some kind of template for people to go off of is basically, I guess, what's needed there.
Can I just... I think transportation might have a different age for who can gather the child at the bus stop, just as you're considering that, just throwing that out there.
Right, that was part of the conversation as well, the transportation aspect, and making sure that the proper, you know, individuals were there picking up students off of the bus and being consistent with that as well. But we haven't really gotten... Made any decision around that policy for that fact that there's a lot of moving parts, and that's the whole need for it, because depending on what's school building, or depending on the bus, everything, it looks different. So just kind of finding like a median age, I guess, that would be suitable and appropriate for to pick up, especially depending on what the age of the child you're picking up, and all those other factors would have to go into it.
On that, too, I just wanted to share that there was a lot of community feedback that IDs were not being asked when children were being picked up from the bus and a couple times at schools. This was all just said to me, so I don't have, like, you know, documentation, but, I mean, personally, I was not asked for identification to get my kids from the bus.
We did talk about that a little bit, about in practice how, you know, if a bus driver sees you put your kid on the bus, and then they see you at the bus stop at the end of the day, and they recognize you and can in their head have already associated you with that child, they're not gonna ask necessarily for the ID, but if there's a different person, then they really ought to be.
Yeah, this is like a neighbor picked up the child and had never met the bus driver.
That should not be happening according to policy that we already have, so...
Thank you for that, because that was a question I posed, like, how are we... What does that look? That is the policy, but what is it like in reality, in practicality, really? So I think that's something worth looking at is, you know, how do we practically implement that policy in a way, other than like the kind of the photographic memory type of approach, right? Which is a good approach, right, to kind of not have to check every single one, but if someone different is there, you know, what is happening?
Yeah, it was even just like, I'm watching a friend's daughter after school, and I asked for her, and they were just like, sure. That kind of thing.
Probably you're running that past counsel, I guess, is the question. I think we should.
Sorry?
I think we should run that past counsel, these kinds of considerations on pickups and drop-offs and that kind of thing. I would like at least some advice from them.
We've received a couple of emails from folks in the community about the information that is listed or not listed on our agendas in a publicly available format. And Mary and I were discussing this just very briefly, and thought it might be something for the Policy Committee to take a look at. Just wondering if there's consensus from the rest of the board to have them do that.
With green light?
Green light?
That should be fine.
Okay.
Yep.
This is on our consent agendas, just saying it out loud, right? The consent agendas, the... If you are a member of the public, which is actually... It's difficult for us to do this exercise, because our computers would automatically log into what the board would see. But figuring out what is available to the public to see, and should there be more information than what's on there? Should we be reading all of it out? Essentially, you guys come up with a recommendation as to this, and we'll talk about it. I also wanted to ask if there is any appetite for the Policy Committee to take a look at our public comment guidelines?
Thinking about that tonight, especially given our very long meeting. And I know that was something that was kind of been on the table for a long time and never really cemented. I think it's worth definitely revisiting in some way or another, whatever that looks like.
What is the concern? When, or how long? Or, to me, we have this, like, set of guidelines that we usually read, but I don't think that they were read today about what the public can expect, but that that's not actually part of our policy. That's just...
Right, that's just... I guess I more feel like in practice, I'm feeling like we have what in reality ends up being almost too... Under the sun, if there's a better way to do it. I don't, you know, I'm actually thinking maybe our interim superintendent has different ideas from different districts you've been a part of, that maybe might work better for the board, work better for the community, I don't know. Also along the same lines, because we have significantly less public comments since we ended our two-way virtual public comment, I'm wondering if there's an appetite... Well, really, twofold. I'm wondering if there's an appetite to ask our superintendent to get us additional information on the costs and what it might look like if we wanted to institute that again. Like, is there an A, is there a B, is there a C? And then, depending on the information, I guess we could ask the Policy Committee to take a look at that as well.
Yeah, I've heard, you know, from the community. I think that was... We had discussed that, but I would say, yeah, you probably buy our retreat. I think we want to pick an option A, B, or C of what, you know, we go two-way, we get this. I know, I think we've discussed that, but I think it'd be beneficial by the time our retreat is done to sort of have a decision of what we want to do there and then move forward.
We can work together and put together some sort of proposal until our call. We've actually been working around that. It will involve staffing, it will involve, you know, software technology, it will involve all of the above, but I think we can do that together.
My thought process on this is, given the major lift that we have coming up in the bond, and the fact that we have so recently had the two-way virtual back and forth, that I don't want to put us in a position where the community maybe hasn't realized that we don't have that anymore, and now sort of comes to tune in to figure out what's going on with the bond, and feels as though they don't have a way to participate. I'm open to all different perspectives on this, but that at least is sort of why, where I'm coming from, and this has kind of been eating away at me in the back of my mind, so I wanted to get it out there sooner rather than later.
I'm very pro the two-way. I mean, that's how I participated all last year. I wouldn't have half the knowledge that I do now if I hadn't been able to do that, because I didn't have childcare, and I know that a lot of other parents are in the same position.
Okay, so green light on that? All right. I think we still have the Facilities Committee to share out.
Can I ask one more thing about the policy? Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
The safe gun storage thing that I've been asking about, I guess, I'm just kind of curious what the process is, and I don't want to keep badgering you for updates, but, like, how does this work? Because I, you know, have brought it up, and now what happens? Because that's a Policy Committee thing?
I'll be honest with you, Annie. I don't know the answer to that question. Why don't I work with Mary, and we'll try to figure out the mechanism for addressing that further?
I understand we have a lot going on, too. I was just curious about...
Sorry, is that question going to the board or no? Did I miss it?
Yeah, I guess to the Policy Committee, but anybody who can answer?
I think when we have questions like that, we should really, as a practice, send it to all the boards, so we're all aware.
No, she's mentioned in a board dialogue a couple of times.
Yeah.
All right, but I guess if there's emails or anything more to do there?
I emailed... I emailed everybody. I emailed everybody, and then I talked about it last board meeting briefly.
I'll see if I can find it for you, Frank.
That's fine, I'll find it.
Okay, so we'll, we'll circle back on that. And thank you for the reminder. Facilities?
Help me fill in if I miss anything here.
Yeah.
Okay. So we had our meeting, Alita presented the smart bond presentation, and we talked about also, as Mary was on the call, and Frank and Melissa were also on the call, which was a virtual meeting. We talked, we also talked about ways to, some ideas around communicating the, and communication tools and tactics around the bond, and some of the other things that we could potentially look at in terms of, you know, some of the pain points that we currently face, some of the messaging that we want to incorporate, just threw out a bunch of ideas like that. And I think the, the intent is just to get our initial preparation kicked off for some of the things that we want to ultimately message in the community. Did I miss anything from there? Is there anything else that...
No, I think you caught it. I would just add, that was the community advisory meeting, right? So it wasn't just a word, it was community members giving feedback, part of that too.
Correct. Community members on it too, yes.
The school community and the broader community.
Correct.
Great. Anything else to share out, any further dialogue? All right, I will take a motion to enter into executive session.
So, I can't even speak, I want to say so moved, my voice cracked. Oh, goodness.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention.